Okay, good afternoon and welcome. I'd like to reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting from our lunch recess. And welcome the Planning Commissioners here to this joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commissioners. Welcome. As you all here, we've got a very full agenda item that we're going to together listen, engage, and have some discussion. And that's the General Plan Update, and this is a study session for the General Plan Update. And so I will, with that, convene this meeting and turn it over to the Chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning Commissioner of the County of Ventura has now called the order. I'd like the Clerk to call the roll, please. Or would you prefer the Chair do it? The Chair can do it. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Ronsart.
Here.
Commissioner Radukas. Madam Chair, please report for the five Commissioners who are present, having no other items on our agenda. We turn it back to you.
Thank you. And our call to order was early this morning at 8:30, but we did get a nice lunch break. So, thank you again. Good to have you here. So, we're going to move forward with this study session, and I will turn it over to our outstanding staff to introduce this. At first, I'd ask if there's any Board members who'd like to make comment. I'd like to just open by saying that I do appreciate so much the Planning Commission in doing this joint study session, and that we're going to hear certainly all of the good work that's been done to date by our agency and planning leadership team and the community, and that this is the first step in what will be a very important and valuable process for all of us with the community to go through, and one that will have lots of opportunities for public engagement yet ahead for us and for all of the Board members and the Commissioners. So, anyone else care to comment? Very important work, and I -- good to see you, Kim. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chair Long, and members of the Board, and Chair Westner, and members of the Planning Commission, and Mr. Powers. For the record, my name is Kim Pearlheart. I'm the Planning Director here for the County of Ventura. And we are pleased to be here today to present our work product to date on the program, the General Plan Update Work Program that your Board authorized on January 27th of this year. So, since that time, we have retained through the RFP process our consultants, Mentor Harnish. They are here with us today to share the information on this workshop relating to the basics of a general plan, the work program, project overview, and evaluation of our existing general plan, a discussion on general plan, best practices and innovations, and a recommendation for the work program, including several options for your Board to consider and your Planning Commission to consider. So, to present this information, I'd like to introduce Jim Harnish, a Principal with Mentor Harnish, and a owner of the firm, and Ted Holzum, who's also a Principal Planner with the firm. Both Jim and Ted have done an admirable job in a very tight and short deadline, and I would like to thank them for all of the work that they've done to engaging the community and to really listening and incorporating all the comments that they've heard from your Planning Commission, your Board, from the community, and from our stakeholders into this comprehensive report that you're about to hear. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce Ted and Jim to make the presentation.
Thank you, Kim.
If I might ask a question to start out. Would you prefer, as you work through this presentation, if there are questions that we should invite them to ask questions at that time, or any of us, or would you prefer to go through your presentation and then?
Feel free to ask questions at any time.
As you move through it? Okay, thank you.
Since I haven't memorized the PowerPoint, I hope we can get it back up. I was warned about this, the idiosyncrasies of this, and I told Chris that if a problem could be had by one of these, I would have it. So, I'll try to be careful. Madam Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, thank you for having us here. My name is Jim Harnish. I'm, as Kim said, the Principal and Owner of Mentor Harnish. I've been a planner for far too long and specialized mostly in general plans as a consultant, although I've been a Planning Director for several cities. I enjoy -- have enjoyed that, too. With me is Ted Holzum, our Principal Planner. Ted has been a planner since about 2000, 12 years. He has worked on more general plans than I have, actually, in that period of time, and is actively involved statewide efforts, both from a planning perspective and working with APA. And he's really a remarkable planner. So, Ted and I are going to share the presentation. We're going to be up and down two or three times. That's the way we divided it up. This will be roughly an hour presentation. If I see somebody going like this, we'll speed it up a little bit, and if it's like slowed down, we'll do that. We can do that. So, great. Get my touch here. There we go. So, the overview of the session, we've just done the introductions, and there are five basic parts of our presentation. I'm going to talk a little bit just about general plan basics, just to kind of set the scene for the general plan. Ted is then going to give an overview of what we're up to on this work, not the general plan update, but this effort to develop a general plan update program. Third, I'm going to talk about my observation, our observations, about your current general plan and what some of the deficiencies might be that could be corrected through an update, whether that update is comprehensive or technical, and we'll talk about that much later in the options. And then Ted's going to provide you some examples, talk about what is going on in other communities, particularly other counties, talk about best practices to kind of give you an idea and a perspective on the issues that we've raised in terms of possibilities for updating your general plan. And then finally, we'll get to the heart of the reason for this study session, and that is our recommendations for a general plan update work program and budget for you to consider. And we have options in there as well that we can talk about. So, it's a very broad, very somewhat dense discussion, but it's necessary. This is a very big, complicated project, and there are a lot of moving parts, and so it's important to make sure that you have a good understanding of everything that could go on with the general plan update. So, general plan basics. Every city and county in California has been required to have a general plan since the 1970s. State Office of Planning Research periodically publishes guidelines that provide direction on what the statutes say the general plan should have. Those, incidentally, have been in process of being updated for three or four years now. We're all anxiously awaiting to see how they come out. They will be dealing with some of the contemporary issues that we're talking, we'll be talking about later, but as of yet, they don't, aren't here yet. General plan really is your constitution for growth and resource management in the county. There are some basic general plan requirements. You have to address a certain number of topics that we'll talk about in a minute. Every general plan has to have goals, policies, and implementation programs, has to have a land use and circulation diagram or map, and has to be internally consistent. So, this is just basic pieces of a general plan. General plans need to be comprehensive and long-term. In other words, you don't want to prepare a general plan like you might prepare a specific plan that has a much shorter timeframe. And then, once the plan's prepared, all of your actions that are relevant to the general plan have to be consistent with the general plan and the implementation measures as well. This is, Larry Minter is my favorite description of a general plan. We've been using it for 30 years, talking about the general plan. I like to refer to the general plan as the alpha dog of planning because there isn't anything more important in planning than the general plan. And most everything you do from development and resource preservation flow from the general plan, your goals, your policies, and the implementation programs. In your case, your area plans are really part of your general plan, and we'll talk in more detail about that as well. And then a master plan, specific plans, all have to be consistent, and then, of course, your zoning subdivision ordinance. So, the importance of having a current general plan, the plan really should represent the current aspirations and views of the community. It should guide your long-term growth, and in cases of counties, resource management and preservation. And you'll hear me say that and Ted say that throughout. The distinctive difference between a city general plan and a county general plan is that the emphasis on city general plans is on development and growth, emphasis on county general plans is on resource management and preservation. Now, you do accommodate growth, but that's not necessarily the primary focus of county general plans. And then, the general plan should be--
Excuse me, I'm just going to ask you to repeat that. So, the focus of city general plans is more on growth, county general plans is more on preservation of resources?
Preservation of resources.
Thank you.
That's right. There are development and growth elements of a general plan, but it's secondary to the preservation and management. And then, of course, the general plan should address contemporary issues that are important to the community. So, every general plan has to address seven specific topics, land use, circulation, conservation, open space, housing, noise, and safety. But you can address them in any fashion that you want. And many communities have taken those seven topics and organized them in a way that best suits that community, and that's what you've done here. And so, those seven topics are addressed under your four categories of resources, hazard, land use, and public facilities and services. So, your goals, policies, and implementation document is organized that way, as is your technical appendices, which provides the background information and support, and in some cases, the technical information that's required by the general plan law. And then, the third part of your general plan are your 10 area plans. They are a part of, not just consistent with, but part of your general plan. That's the way you've adopted them. And just a note, she you all know, but this is maybe more for the audience, that the county general plan only addresses land use and growth in unincorporated areas. It doesn't address growth, change, zoning, or anything else within the 10 incorporated cities. And this is just a map of--
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
So, there are seven elements of the general plan that you have to have state law, and we have four, but we've incorporated those seven in those four. Could you tell me how we've done that? For example, where's the noise element?
The noise element's in the hazards, in the hazards chapter, it would be.
And the housing is in--
I think it's organized under land use, but I'm not sure.
And circulation and open space, I just--
Resources, in the resources.
Circulation's in the land use one?
No, that's in public facilities and services.
It's in public facilities. Okay, it's a little different than what I'm used to seeing, so.
It's not unusual. I mean, most of the plans we work on, we recommend following that, the guidelines format. We think it's cleaner, and frankly, we're just used to it. But there are good reasons in some communities to reorganize it under categories that may be more traditional issue areas that the jurisdiction feels like you want to address those in that grouping.
So, Jim, can I follow up with that?
Sure.
So, you have, for example, in our general plan, we have number three, land use, and then in existing land uses. In our plan, we only have seven, five compared to seven. Is that because they're integrated within some of those?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're not missing anything, that we're just combining?
No, the general plan guidelines say, here's the kind of the approach that the state law has outlined, but the state law doesn't require you to have those seven elements. It says you have to address all of the things under each, listed under each of those elements, but you have the flexibility of addressing them however you choose, just so long as they're all addressed.
So, we're not missing anything because we show five?
No, no, you're good that way. So, why update the general plan? Some might consider it a simple question, but I'm going to go through our thoughts. Your plan was last comprehensively updated almost 30 years ago. In 10 years ago, you did a technical update, and we're going to talk about this later, so I'll just explain what we see as the difference between comprehensive and technical update. A comprehensive update is when you, there is an element of community outreach, where you spend time talking to the community and getting input on what the issues and opportunities and assets are in the community, and at periods of time, go back to the community with, say, draft goals or a vision and get their input before you make a decision, the Planning Commission, Make a Recommendation Board make a decision about that particular aspect of the general plan. So, there's a big outreach component. And then also, there is our components, the visioning component I mentioned, and then we'll talk about land use alternative evaluation as well. So, you didn't do any of those things in your technical update of '05, but what you did do is cover all the bases, so that you covered all of the requirements in state law. State law doesn't say you have to have a Citizens Advisory Committee or a big outreach program. It does say that the Planning Commission and the City Council, or Board of Supervisors have to hold public hearings and enable the public to come and testify on the plan, but you don't have to make any special effort beyond that. So, that's a technical update. Oh, and then the housing element was, your housing element was adopted in 2013, consistent with the state law. It's been certified. Before this, if you decide to go through with the general plan update, in all likelihood, that update will come back again for the housing element. So, we think, in our practice and experience, most general plans include a vision for the future. There's a step in the process early on where the community first, and you eventually, talk about what's the overarching vision for the county. And this provides kind of an umbrella for the remaining part of the general plan. It's a kind of sounding board for the goals and policies that are developed. Are these achieving our vision? Are they consistent with the vision? And so, that happens throughout the process, and it's a really important part of the planning process, in our view. And then, secondly, you need a plan that really is long-range, for the next 20 or 25 years. Right now, your plan is out to 2020. So, as you did in '05, you did extend the horizon year for the plan. Again, that was a technical extension. A lot has happened since then, and you may want to consider a longer timeframe. We've seen some general plans go out 30 or 40 years. So, it is a topic to be discussed once the plan gets going. There have been a lot of new state laws passed. You've addressed most of them in your technical update. Some that have come up since then are, would be addressed, especially the SIGMA, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, has a component of requiring a coordination with the general plan and sustainable groundwater management plans. There are a number of other laws that don't have specific general plan requirements, but really do affect general plans indirectly, and in some cases, even directly. AB 32, greenhouse gas emission reduction, the sustainable communities planning effort that has gone on throughout the SCAG region and every other metropolitan region in the state, all have influences on general plans. And while the law says on SB 375, you don't have to change your general plan, most places are to match up with the regional planning effort. So, that's an issue. Then, a lot of new ideas. Ted will talk a little bit later about the outreach that we did as a part of this program earlier in April. And in our discussions with you and other stakeholders, it's clear that there are a lot of issues floating out there that are commonly addressed as a part of a general plan update. Contemporary planning issues, you've already passed a healthy communities resolution. There is a great opportunity to address healthy communities and general plans. Many have healthy community elements that Ted will talk about later. Then, the whole issues of sustainability and resiliency, coming, dealing with the effects of climate change, coming out of the recession, there are all these contemporary topics that the general plan would be a great vehicle for you to address in a comprehensive way, rather than individual pieces. You can bring this all together. And this is a, we just kind of developed a list of what things we observed in our short time here, of activities, issues, or initiatives that are going on here, all on kind of separate tracks. Well, a general plan update could be a great forum for bringing a lot of these issues into one place where the, you have consistent, compatible policies that address a really broad range of issues. So, another reason to update the plan. And then, finally, we have a lot of new tools and technology that we can use as a part of a general plan update to make the plan more user-friendly, more accessible, more understandable, more useful. We'll talk about graphics and illustrations in the plan to make, to help people understand the implications of some of the policies or the land uses. We recommend in our work program, and most general plan updates have a general plan website, that is a great communication tool, where it houses all of the work that's been done, all of the meeting notices, so that people can go to one place and find out about the general plan, what's going on. And then, we also talk about web-based general plan at the end of the project, which is a fully searchable general plan, a digital general plan that is much more flexible and doesn't have to require paper. So, that's just a really quick overview, I think it was quick, of general plan law and the reasons why you would update the general plan. Now, Ted's going to talk a little bit about what we're actually up to in this work program.
Thanks, Jim. Good afternoon. As Jim said, I'm just going to give a quick overview of what this program's about. I'm sure everyone in front of me is aware of it, and you have been reading about it for the past week, if not longer. So, maybe more for the audience, we can just explain what it is that we're here to do today and get out of this process that we're undertaking right now. So, what is the work program project? Well, it's first a process to evaluate the existing general plan, and that's been done. Jim and I and our consulting team, as well as county staff, looked through the existing document and compared it to what state law requires, what is being done in contemporary planning practices with other general plans in other counties throughout the state, and critiqued the document. And we included that as an appendix to our report that is being presented today. It's also an exercise to take an initial step in reaching out to the community and to stakeholders within the county, to ask them, what are the issues facing Ventura County right now? What are the opportunities that the county could capitalize on in the future? And what type of assets should the county be focusing on preserving or enhancing as it moves forward into the future? And again, a summary of those outreach efforts are included in the packet of materials. And then, finally, and most importantly, to develop a work program of options that the county could use to conduct a general plan update. And that's really the focus of what we're here to talk about today. What the program is not is, this isn't a general plan update. That's going to come after we complete this initial phase of this effort. So, it's not an update. We're not changing any policies as part of this. We're talking about potential changes to policies or issues to address, but this won't result in any changes to the existing general plan. And it won't change anything dealing with land use or resource protection in the county. So, this is really just an opportunity for us to work out the details of the type of general plan update program that would be best suited to address the issues facing Ventura County. And one other note is related to the local coastal program. The focus of this is, of this work program will be the general plan for the entire county except for the areas addressed by the local coastal program. That's a separate effort that's been ongoing and will continue, and the focus of the general plan update program itself will focus on everything inland outside of that coastal zone, because the local coastal program is already addressing that separately. So, what types of products have we produced? I mentioned some of those. We have the summary of community priorities. We conducted stakeholder interviews for over four days with over two dozen individuals. We also conducted community workshops in three locations in the county in April. And what we were asking the community members and the stakeholders is, what are the assets that should be preserved? How should we be addressing the issues, and what are those issues? And then, what opportunities are out in the county that we could be capitalizing on through the general plan update? We also produced the options report. And again, this is dealing with, you know, what types of tasks and phases and work products could be produced as part of a general plan update? What specific topics could the general plan include and address? Water is a big issue now. Agriculture is a big issue that's not specifically called out as a separate element in the existing general plan. Sustainability and resiliency, dealing with climate change is a new issue that's emerged since the general plan was last updated. These are all topics or elements that could be incorporated into the existing general plan, and that would be made a part of this work program. And then, finally, what are the roles and responsibilities that county staff will take or that the county will need to hire technical consulting services to assist them in the general plan update program? And what are the associated costs with that? And then, most importantly, the general plan is a visionary document. It often involves a lot of community outreach, and there's lots of different options available to the county for how it engages the community in the update process. And the work program options provide an overview of those different options, and they're based on our experience in working with counties and what's most effective in engaging stakeholders and residents within unincorporated areas of counties, as well as the cities as partners to the county. So, this is a diagram of our schedule that we're currently using for this work program project. As you can see, we've done quite a bit. The dash line box there at the bottom identifies where we are here today, conducting this joint study session. I won't go through all of the specific details of where we've been, but a lot of that dealt with working with staff to evaluate the plan, conduct community outreach, develop the draft options report, and bring it before you here today. Moving forward, we'll be refining the work program based on the direction we received today or at a subsequent meeting, and then bringing that back to the Board of Supervisors for confirmation before moving forward with a general plan update, if that's the direction of the Board. So, that's my brief overview of our work program project. Hopefully, Jim's had a chance to catch his breath because he's back up again.
Were there any questions about what we're doing and what our objectives are?
One question. So, you said the LCP is not part of the general plan?
Pardon the--
The LCP is not part--
That's correct.
Okay. How do you incorporate that, or what happens? Is that just a separate document?
Yeah, most places leave it, most communities leave it a separate document. In our experience, most of the coastal commissions really don't like integrated LCPs with the general plan.
With the general plan.
And it can be more challenging. I have limited experience with it, but in general, it's typical that it's kept as a separate document.
It's a different document.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, the, one of the first things we did when we started this project is took a really close look at your general plan, and I've kind of summarized this already. Adopted in '88 initially, updated 2005, has three basic components. And we read through the entire general plan and then selectively read through in detail some of the area plans and then skimmed all the rest. So, our focus, though, is on the goals, policies, and implementation programs, because the technical appendices are what they are. I read them. There's not a lot of discussion of them, but I can tell you that 10 years old, there are a lot of things that are out of date, and whether you do a technical update or a comprehensive update, it is time to go back and look at the technical aspects of the general plan. So, there are, I think we've raised eight or nine points about your general plan. It is technically consistent with state law. You've, your staff has made sure that it is on the earlier updates and the technical update to the address of state law that was required to address at the time. There are a lot of laws, I mentioned earlier, a couple, that really directly affect general plan updates. So, when you get ready to do the general plan update, it's going to be really difficult to avoid dealing with AB 32 and SB 375. And AB 32 comes to the general plan through the SECO analysis. And-- And AB thirty-two comes to the general plan through the CECO analysis. Essentially, the EIR will look at the general plan to determine how it contributes to the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. And if it doesn't do a good enough job, then the EIR will recommend additional policies or programs to get those emissions down. Our view is, if you're going to do the general plan, you might as well take that issue on directly and deal with it upfront on the policy development. And SB three seventy-five, there are really advantages to communities to have their plans consistent with the sustainable community strategy. I haven't looked enough at that as a part of this work to tell you whether or not your plan is consistent with it or not. That would take a little bit different effort, but it would be a logical result of any general plan update. Your current plan doesn't address any of these contemporary planning issues that we've been talking about. It's not a surprise, because many of them have really come to the forefront in the last ten years. A few not, so much, but sustainable, sustainability, healthy communities, adaptation and sea level rise, dealing with those issues. It's not required by state law, but you really ought to do it if you're going to update your general plan, because it is key to your long-range growth and resource preservation.
Also, you, when you were talking about SB three seventy-five, and that's to reduce greenhouse gas emissions using land use and transportation, right?
That's correct.
And the slide where you talk about contemporary planning issues, a big one right now is active transportation. You know, looking at cycling, looking at pedestrian, just ways to get people into non-motorized active transportation, and that goes back to the healthy communities and all that. So I think that would be another one of those planning issues. You look at the Southern California Association of Governments, and they have, you know, considerable grant funds for that. Proposition one's got all the grant funds for active transportation. So to me, that's something else that we should be looking at too.
Active transportation, complete streets is an important component of that too.
Right.
So yeah, that's a very good point. So contemporary planning issues, I've talked, mentioned the vision, visioning process wasn't part of your original general plan update that I could tell in eighty-eight, and it was not part of your technical update. And this is, this will be a part, a discussion that you'll want to have today about the level of visioning that you want to do in this update, if any. But it does, that's kind of the focus for getting the plan started and developing the big ideas and the guiding policies for the general plan that carry through. If you do an alternatives analysis, typically alternatives all have to be consistent with guiding principles and vision. So you don't do, you don't come up with an alternative that falls outside what your broad expectations are for, for the community.
If I may, sorry, but the, to me, we do have a major vision of Ventura County. It's unlike all the other counties of the state of California, really, which is you build in the cities and you leave the unincorporated area and develop, you know, the whole guidelines for orderly development is, wouldn't that be considered the visions and the, that's how I see it.
The guidelines for orderly development could be considered a vision.
Yeah.
It isn't necessarily the, kind of the lead-in for the general plan that guides all of the, that is at the beginning of the plan and kind of organize, is an organizing principle for the policies. At least it's not obviously that way.
Thanks.
From an outsider.
[inaudible]
Yeah, that, that's, and that's, I'll get to this in a minute. The, the plan is fairly dense and fairly technical, and so it doesn't present itself well. It's hard to read, it was hard for me, who I read a lot of general plans, to get through the details. So individuals who are interested in looking for something and trying to make sense of the county's policies will have to work really hard to find what they're looking for in the plan. The, when that plan was produced initially in nineteen eighty-eight, it was just like, really similar to plans that Laurie and I were producing back in the eighties, because we didn't have color copiers there then. There wasn't really much use of color. Frankly, it looked like the plans that I'd worked on twenty-five or thirty years ago. So it's not that it was a bad plan, it just hasn't kept up with what our technology and our abilities to communicate. Better, we've got a lot better communication tools now to make the ideas and policies and principles clearer and understandable, so.
Excuse me?
Yes.
If we go with a paperless general plan, would we be able legally to keep adjusting that to new formats as technology changes?
Adjusting it to new formats in terms of...
Color, graphics, I don't know, maybe they're going to become three-dimensional general plans, I don't know, but, you know, over twenty-five or thirty years. Are you legally allowed to do that? I mean, it would be one of the advantages of going with a paperless general plan.
Well, it's slightly new territory, and I don't have a, an absolute clear answer for that. The, I think in all likelihood, you'll still have to have a few paper copies laying around in the library or at your front counter, because state law requires that you have plans available to folks, and if they don't have access to a computer, then you may be required to have a limited number of paper copies. That's my guess, and that would be my advice right now. And then another couple of comments, we, and I'll show you an example of a user guide. More and more, the plans are really focused on helping people guide their way through the general plan and understand the, the inner workings of the plan. This is just a comparative example of a page out of the Ventura County plan, and then a page that, out of a more contemporary plan. Uses some color, take labels, gives titles to all the policies. So you, you can scan down, and you can see what the topic of the policy is without reading it. Has a uniform numbering system. And then, we haven't really gone into much detail about this, but the, most plans now have a implementation method for each policy, not necessarily a program. You don't have to have a program to implement each policy, but a method. And the, this, these letters say RDR, that's, it's the development review process. So some policies that you have are implemented through the review of development applications. Well, the policy, plans that we do tag every policy, so that it's clear what the expectation is for implementation. I talked about a reader's guide that kind of points out what the different pieces of goal and policy introduction is, and what the intent of that is. We have, oftentimes, we'll use several different kinds of reader guides. Illustrations, pictures, better than at least ten or fifteen words. And then this is getting a little bit into the planner weeds on the, the general plan, but as I mentioned before, some of the technical appendices are out of date. In many cases, there's no link between a policy and a program. And typically, the hierarchy in a general plan is, you have a goal, you have several policies that implement that goal, and then under the policies, you have programs that implement some of the policies. And my read of the general plan is that there is many times some really good, some good policies and some good programs, but there isn't the link between the two. They're kind of separate. And you may want to just take a look back. I think I, in the general plan evaluation, we described some of that, but you may want to look at that yourself to get a feel for it. And then from a technical writing standpoint, we and most of our colleagues make an effort to clearly write, when we're writing a policy, it's policy language, and program, it's program language. And in many cases, it switches back and forth in, in your plan. So just a drafting, approach to drafting. Implementation programs, there are plenty of implementation programs in there, but, but most of them don't describe the responsible agency or department for, who's responsible for implementing it, doesn't describe the timing for it, doesn't describe the funding source, how are you going to pay for that implementation? And in some cases, implementation is a responsibility of an outside agency like the AC, APCD, the Air Pollution Control District, and your county plan can't tell them what to do. You can coordinate with them, but you can't give them assignments from the general plan. And then in the area plans, what, what we discovered is there are, there's way too many goals and policies in there that are approached. The area plans is, you have goals and policies for that area only, and don't have county-wide policies, but there are a lot of those in your area plans, and they should be stripped out. Right now, there is different language, so there's a, like a county-wide policy addressing air quality in one community plan, but the general plan states that policy differently. So there's some subtle inconsistencies there, but that's a, really a cleanup item. Here's an example of an implementation program, has the implementation measure, what policies it implements, what the responsible departments are, what the supporting departments are, and then a timing on when that should be implemented. And this gets connected to your annual report that Kim provides you, that gives a progress on what you're, what you're doing. This is a, set up properly, this is a great tool for your annual report. So summarizing, why update the general plan? It's an aging plan, there are new state laws that really should address changing challenges, new contemporary issues, and county-wide initiatives and priorities. All are really good reasons to take a look at the general plan now, it's a really good timing. So with that, Ted's going to talk a little bit about best practices and give you some examples of plans that we've worked on and other folks have worked on, to kind of talk about what the range of possibilities are. Unless you have any questions about the general plan, unless you have any questions about the general plan evaluation? Okay.
Seems to me like we need a lot of work. It's really, we need a comprehensive...
I think so.
After all that presentation. So they're not consistent, you know, and the policies in the general plan and so forth.
Well, that consistency issue is fairly minor. I mean, it's not, it's not endemic throughout all of them. I just was, as, reading through, I had noticed that there was, you know, and you have to be precise with the general plan. And if you're using one word and one policy and a different word that's supposedly the same policy in the general plan, then you do have an inconsistency.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's a lot, that's a lot of cleanup. Your area plans really are a lot of cleanup. And we do, we'll talk about a comprehensive update, but at the minimum, you probably need to just do a housekeeping with them. The Saticoy Plan that you're just finishing up is a great example of...
The Saticoy Plan, yeah.
A good area plan. They have stripped out those non-community-specific policies, so it's, it really falls in line with what we think are really good area plans.
So the Saticoy Plan's a good model for that?
Pardon?
The Saticoy Plan's a good model for that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to spend that much money on your community plans, it's...
Yeah. What was it, six hundred thousand or so?
So I'm just going to review some of the optional elements and topics that we suggest that the county consider as part of its general plan update. Talk a little bit about the options available for organizing the general plan, the structure of the, the elements and the various components of the plan, including the community plans. Provide some examples of best practices that are being used in general plans today. And then talk about some of our best practices for the general plan update process from a community engagement standpoint, as well as the other management and process-related aspects of the general plan update. So as Jim mentioned, there are seven elements of the general plan that have to be addressed. The county has its discretion in how it addresses those topics. It can include as many or as few elements as it desires, but it does have to address those specific topics. But there are a whole number of different types of optional elements and topics that general plans include. And every few years, the California Office of Planning and Research conducts a survey of cities and counties throughout the state. The last one was done in twenty twelve. And I just went to that document and pulled out some of the statistics related to optional elements. And if you take all the cities and counties in California and those that responded to the survey, there's over forty different types of topics or elements included in general plans that aren't the seven mandated elements. So these are elements that these cities and counties have identified as being important to them, to the point that they feel that it's necessary to raise them to the level of highlighting them in their general plan as a specific topic or element within the So when we looked at the county's general plan and we got a feeling for what the key issues were here based on the stakeholder outreach and the community outreach that we conducted, we identified a few topics that we felt the county should consider as optional elements or topics addressed in the general plan, depending on how the document gets organized. The first was agriculture. Obviously agriculture is a major part of the unincorporated county, as well as the incorporated areas. Agriculture is really part of the identity of Ventura County. So we felt that this was a worthy topic or element for the county to consider as part of its general plan update. You can see here that over half the counties in California do have agricultural elements within their general plans. Ventura County doesn't have a specific element called out. Agriculture is addressed in the resources and the land use chapters, but we feel that it is an important topic to include and highlight specifically. So what type of topics would be addressed in this? Well, in addition to all the background and existing conditions data that would be gathered related to agriculture, both as a resource, as an economic driver, and other types of factors, these are the kind of goal statements or policy issue areas that would typically be addressed in an agricultural element. And these are based on, we've produced agricultural elements in other communities, most recently in Merced County. And this reflects some of the topics that we addressed in, in that element.
Could I ask a question?
Of course.
Currently, our general plan, I mean, one of, two of the elements that our state required are open space and conservation. As I understand, open space and conservation are in the resources portion of the general plan. So currently, is that where agriculture is also? Policies, programs, related agriculture, is that where you would find them?
In the resources chapter?
Right.
And yes, and it would also be addressed in land use from a, a land use standpoint of development and what occurs on agricultural lands. For example, the land use designations on the land use diagram, agricultural areas that are designated throughout the county and addressed...
The map.
Right.
The map.
In the land use element.
But also, I'm just wondering if that's where we currently have issues regarding conservation of agriculture, conservation of open space? Okay, that's where it is.
Right, yes.
So you're suggesting pull it out of there and make it its own element?
Yes. Another topic that we would suggest you consider as a optional element in the general plan is a water element. Water is obviously an extremely important issue throughout the state right now with the ongoing drought. But more recently, with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, and the county's reliance, in a lot of cases, on groundwater and the use of groundwater in the county, we believe that this is an issue that should be brought up to a higher level and highlighted in the county's general plan. Topics for addressing water are listed here, obviously. They deal with where water's coming from and how reliable those sources are for serving not only urban uses, but also agricultural and open space or habitat users of water, reuse and conservation of water by the end-users, the quality of water, wastewater and its effect on groundwater resources and surface water resources, watershed management, coordinating with other agencies, special districts in particular, in how water is being used and conserved and maintain quality. And then public education and awareness is becoming more and more important as we deal with the drought and working with community members and businesses and farmers to help conserve water and use water more efficiently.
So Ted, do you think that ultimately that seventy-four is going to be much higher once we, people start working on their elements because of the drought?
I'm sorry?
You think that seventy-four is going to be higher as time progresses?
I, I think so, yeah. And again, this, this was done in twenty twelve, the survey, so...
We have plenty of water then?
Well, yeah, yes and no. I think that these issues, I think in the last three years though, as general plan updates have been prepared, there's probably been some additional water elements included in those, so that's probably a little bit higher.
Probably lessen or increase, the yeses are probably going to increase, but yeah.
Yeah, I would think so. One of the important aspects of this though, is the level of analysis that goes into evaluating what the water issues are. The approach that we've put forward here... The approach that we've put forward here isn't the, isn't the most robust approach to dealing with this. It would include all of the analysis based on research that's been conducted so far and research that would be ongoing along with the general plan update by other agencies, the water districts as they implement the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. But it would address and incorporate all the goals and policies, provide the direction for the county to move forward with how it addresses water across this range of issues. So it's not intended to be an extremely detailed assessment of, for example, the groundwater table in the county. We aren't suggesting that the county do that as part of this. There'll be a lot of other ongoing efforts that we would coordinate with, or the county would coordinate with as part of the update process to inform what goes into this element. Third topic is healthy communities. The first two elements, agriculture and water, we're suggesting that be highlighted as a specific element of the general plan. Healthy communities is a topic that we would recommend being addressed and included in the general plan, but more from a thematic standpoint. The issues addressed that you see here, active lifestyles, access to affordable foods, exposure to pollution, these are all topics that get covered in all of the other types of elements that are typically included in a general plan, the other seven mandated elements. Active lifestyles, that's a land use issue, where people are located and proximity to services. What type of transportation infrastructure, which is covered in the circulation element, are provided to individuals to help them ride their bike more, walk more, promote an active lifestyle? Access to open space, parks, things of that nature to promote an active lifestyle. All of these are already covered in the topics that are within what the seven mandated elements. And so from an organizational standpoint, we feel that it's an important topic to address, but we think that it's best addressed across the elements that would be included in the general plan, the seven mandated elements. So there are several ongoing efforts already here in the county, and we just highlighted a few of those graphically there. So this is an issue that is important to folks here in the county, and we've found that in the most recent general plan updates that we're doing in cities and counties, this is an issue that is being addressed. And so it's becoming more and more important. And from a planner's standpoint in trying to convey to residents and communities about what planning is and how this affects their life, health is one of the most easy ways for us to communicate to them how land use can affect their day-to-day life, how living near services, having access to parks, having access to facilities that help them exercise more and be more active. Those are ways that we can help communicate good planning practices, and one of the best ways to do that is through healthy communities planning efforts.
I'd also throw in like farm-to-fort kind of things, the fact that we do have local agriculture right at our doorsteps.
The next topic is sustainability and resiliency. This is basically dealing with climate change, addressing greenhouse gas reductions, climate change adaptation. This is another element that we would suggest be addressed in the general plan across the various elements versus a standalone element. When we think about the different ways that we reduce greenhouse gas emissions, those often deal with smart growth, reducing vehicle miles traveled. Those are things that are addressed in the land use element and the transportation element. Energy efficiency, that's dealt with in the conservation element. Water conservation, conservation element, or in this case, it could be within the water element. And waste reduction and recycling, again, that's a conservation element issue. So there are a lot of different ways to promote sustainability and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, as well as adapt to climate change, which would be within the safety element primarily and the land use element. Again, it's much easier to address these within the existing seven-element framework of a general plan versus having a standalone element which could cause redundancy among those other elements. And again, these topics that we've been talking about, there's a lot of crossover with healthy communities as well. And so having them addressed in that existing structure makes a lot of sense.
And Ted, although this is probably more part of the LCP discussion and coastal impacts from the Coastal Commission, the sea level rise document that's just been released for draft and for comment will be a piece of information that may, may be integrated in some of this.
Yes. And in 2012, I thought it was really interesting that, you know, over roughly 80% of the jurisdictions in California were addressing climate change in some fashion, whether it was through their general plan or a climate action plan or other type of sustainability action plan. Within that statistic of the 80%, over half of them were addressing it in their general plan. And so the general plan is being used as a venue to address climate change. Now, how that's done is, it's done in different ways depending on the community you go to. One of the things that, one of the approaches that we've been recommending and using in our recent general plan updates is to use the general plan as a community's or jurisdiction's climate action plan. And when they updated the SEQA guidelines a couple of years ago to address climate change, they provided provisions for how a city or county could do this, how they could create what's called a qualified plan for the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. And some of the benefits that come along with this are SEQA streamlining for subsequent projects that are consistent with that plan. So in our minds, it was logical to use the general plan, which is a development review document, and consistencies and findings are made for projects when they come before you for a decision. If the general plan is the climate action plan, then that consistency finding would cover both, and you would have, you would have streamlining benefits for that project. It saves costs and it saves times, not only for the applicant, but also for the county staff who have to review the document. So how does this get done? There's a lot of detail up here, but essentially what this shows is the way that we're doing this in general plans. There's a lot of background information and analysis that goes into a climate action plan. Typically, that would be included in the existing setting section of a general plan or the background report. There's measures and actions that are included in a climate action plan. Those are converted into goals, policies, and implementation programs. There's a monitoring aspect of a climate action plan to check back on progress. The general plan law requires that the county review and report on implementation of the general plan annually. So there's a correspondence there that makes the general plan a perfect vehicle for addressing climate change and using the general plan as the action plan for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. One of the other aspects of this is adaptation to the impacts of climate change. One of the core reasons that we have planning is to protect the public's health, safety, and welfare. And one of the, one of the most critical issues that we'll be facing in the future, and especially the longer-term future, is health impacts, safety impacts that are caused by climate change. And so in my mind, it makes perfect sense that the general plan be a vehicle to provide some long-term solutions or strategies to help start addressing some of those implications. Again, that's typically part of a climate action plan, and it fits well within the framework of the general plan. So the last optional element that we suggested the county consider is an economic development element. There's a lot more cities that have economic development elements compared to counties, but there are counties that do have them. Nearly half of the counties in California have an economic development element. We would suggest this be included as a standalone topic or element within the general plan. It doesn't really fit within those seven required elements. There's definitely flavors of land use when we start talking about promoting jobs and providing locations for jobs. But really, economic development is its own issue or its own topic that is typically dealt with as a standalone topic. Here's the typical types of issues or policy areas that economic development elements include for counties. We included this because during the outreach effort, some, there were some key issues that were brought up as being really important to residents and stakeholders, and it dealt with providing more jobs to the community, providing living wages, supporting local businesses, and making sure that there are sufficient revenues coming in to the public agencies that are providing services, which is typically a component of economic development and economic growth. One of the other things that we saw as being important in all of this is the issue of the jobs housing balance here or imbalance that occurs where you have such a large outcome of residents to work in other regions. If there were additional jobs here, that could help address part of that issue. Those are the types of issues that are typically dealt with in an economic development element, how it can be a vehicle to address some of those issues.
Can I ask a question here?
Yes.
I very much appreciate, those are the kinds of things that are dealt with in economic development, part of a general plan, but of the counties, you say less than half the counties have economic development as part of their general plans. And do you know how many of those counties have policies similar to the Guidelines for Orderly Development also, where they're trying to, where they specifically say they want urban development to take place in existing urban areas? Do those counties have economic development plans also?
Some of them do. San Joaquin County, where we're completing a general plan update right now, they have a longstanding policy to direct all urban growth to the incorporated cities, and they've done that. They now have an economic development element, but I'll tell you through that process, there, we found that there was this conflict between protecting agricultural land and open space lands and promoting economic development and providing places for jobs. There's definitely a balance that has to be found if those are both our priorities for a county, because you can't protect all the ag land and provide places for jobs without giving up something along the lines. And where that occurs is one of the most important decisions that gets made.
And economic development consistent with, I mean, consistent with the Guidelines for Orderly Development that say that kind of urban development should take place in cities and not out in the unincorporated area?
And that could very well be the direction that this takes. I mean, that is, that is a solution.
If it takes that direction, then is there a role for an economic development element?
Maybe. I couldn't give you a yes or no right now.
Thank you.
So those are the, before I move on to the structure, are there any other questions about some of those optional elements or other ideas for other topics that you think maybe we didn't include that could be considered as part of the update? Just wanted to. So, general plan structure typically from a paper document format of a general plan, there's two ways that we see general plans organized. One is as a single document. Yours is sort of organized that way in that it has the goals, policies, and programs, and then appendices, if you think of that as being one document. But it's kind of in between the second, the first option, the second, which is a two-part general plan, where you have all of the background report information, so all the existing settings information, all the data that's collected as part of the update program in one volume, and in a second volume, you have all of the goals, policies, and implementation programs of the general plan. We recommend the two-part structure. It's what we use in most nearly all of our general plan updates unless it's desired to do it another way. And we have a couple of reasons why we like that. First is that we think it's really efficient to keep all of that existing setting information separate from the goals and policies. After two, three, four, five years, that existing conditions information starts to get dated. And if you're a planner at the counter or you're someone interested in what's in the general plan, policy related to a certain topic, and you're looking for a policy sifting through all of that, background information can be tedious and time-consuming. Having them separate provides a lot of efficiencies. It can also, during the process, double, the background report itself can double as the existing setting section of the environmental impact report. So as we go through the general plan or as a general plan update process proceeds, one of the first steps is to create this background report and conduct all of that background research. By doing that, a lot of the issues, a lot of the environmental issues start to rise to the surface early on in the process. And then as the process proceeds, we can start to develop policies and programs to address those issues. So that by the time you get to the environmental review process, the, the general plan can already include most of the goals and policies because you've done all of that existing settings research. And then when the EIR is prepared, you don't have to go back through the whole process of gathering all that background information again. So we think that it's a very efficient way to conduct the update process, and it has a lot of other benefits as the general plan is implemented over time. So how could we apply this to the county's general plan? I just threw together this graphic. This is just one way that I thought we could talk about this organizational structure. If we thought of the county's general plan as a single document, and it had two volumes, one was the policy document, the second the background report. In the policy document, all that would include are the introduction and possibly the vision for the general plan, all the goals and policies structured within the elemental structure that was selected by the county, and then an implementation program that included all of the actions the county would take to implement the plan. Now, within both of those, we have these area plans, the 10 area plans, and we don't know exactly how that would be addressed. They could find their way within the background report and the general plan as a part of those, or they could be freestanding documents. The important thing though is that they are all still part of the general plan, it's just a matter of how they're formatted and which volumes are where on the shelf when you put the whole thing together. And again, having the background report double as the existing setting section of the environmental impact report is another way to gather, take advantage of some efficiencies for the update process.
I really like the idea of making it user-friendly and easy to understand and well-organized and all that. Do you think that we should revisit the, how we have the elements combined so we, people know how to find stuff about the noise element, for example, and?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I think, as Jim said, we would recommend a structure that's more in line with what's recommended in state law of having the seven elements or some variation of that. We typically include a land use element and transportation or what we're calling now a mobility element, because we're not just talking about cars and trucks, we're talking about people on bikes and transit and walking. Housing, obviously. Open space and conservation, we've often combined into just a single resources element.
Which could be agriculture too.
Yeah, and that could include agriculture and water. Then safety, hazards and safety is typically, and we combine that with noise. Oftentimes, or in a lot of cases, we include a public facilities and services element because of the issues around provision of infrastructure, especially so for cities. So I think through your, but I think through the general plan update process and working with staff, you would be able to define what those topics are, and I think that's an important part of the process. It's important to define what those issues are and then to develop what that outline for the general plan is and how you're going to put all the different goals and policies into that structure.
Okay, so potentially then, resources could be open space, conservation, which you have to have, and then you could add agriculture and water, and that all be?
It could be, yeah.
Resource management, right?
Yep, could be.
One quick question for you. Is the two-part general plan structure a more efficient structure in terms of actually doing the work? In other words, can you do things in parallel better with this structure in terms of saving time and?
Yeah, I think it provides a logical order for the update process, because you start with that background report right at the beginning, and then you understand what all the issues are. You understand the regulatory framework within which you're working, and then, right. And so when we talk about different types of structural options, we've already, questions have been asked about a web-based general plan. This is the new frontier of planning documents and conveying the general plan to the public, presenting it to the public, and also to maintaining the document and making it user-friendly. This is the Hayward General Plan Update that we just completed, and this is a draft version of their web-based general plan that we're currently working on. It's not available for public consumption quite yet, it'll be available in the next couple of months, but we have the basic framework put together, and you can see that here. What we found and what we're suggesting to most of our clients is that they think about converting their general plan into a web-based plan after the document is adopted. There was a question asked about whether we need to have a paper document, if you have to have one, and as Jim said, yes, we do have to have a paper document available, that's state law, but that can just be a printout of the general plan from the website, or it can just be a very basic Word document that covers all of the pieces that are within the general plan on the website, but that could be printed and turned over to someone if they requested it. But some of the reasons that we promote the use of a website for the general plan, one is for its accessibility. Almost everyone has access to the internet, most people are comfortable with it and use it frequently. It's a lot easier to go onto a website and navigate through it to get familiar with something or find what you're looking for versus a hard copy document or a PDF that's posted online that you have to download and flip through. posted online that you have to download and flip through.
And Jim, that's the future anyway, right?
It is, yeah.
We're going to be going that direction, so...
Yes.
Because the younger population probably won't know how to look into a book, anyway.
I stopped reading books three years ago. Everything's on my iPad now. The second is that it's searchable. We think that from a, both a resident standpoint, a developer or an applicant standpoint, or staff standpoint, having the document online, finding things quickly through keyword searches, topical searches, and various other types of search functions is a very effective way to organize the document and makes it very user-friendly. It's also trackable. One of the key features of the Hayward plan, and I'll talk of this in a little more detail, is that staff is going to be using it as a mechanism to track responsibilities for implementing all the programs and for reporting out where they are in the implementation process. And it's all publicly available, so if there's ever a question about the status of any given implementation program, it's posted there on the website. And then finally, from a maintenance standpoint, having the document online makes it very simple and easy to update. As general plan amendments occur, as things happen within the county, one of the features in this general plan is that when you go to a policy, if a project has occurred within the city of Hayward that is associated with implementing that policy, they'll be able to link a picture of that to the policy so that people can see what they intended to have happen as a result of implementing the general plan. So it has a lot of possibilities for conveying information and maintaining the document, and we think it is the way of the future for planning documents. And we highly recommend that the county consider this as part of the update process. So I'm just going to go through some examples and features of some general plans that have been prepared recently. Are there any questions about the structure before I move on? So I have three or four examples. The first is Merced County. This is a plan that we prepared, was adopted a couple of years ago. This was a plan that used that two-part general plan approach. It was not put online, so it is a hard copy document, but it includes a background report and a policy document. There were community plans within Merced County. Those were maintained, but we created a structure or a framework so that those documents, while they're not physically within the general plan, have a place and they're called out so that they're very easy to reference if any questions come up about properties within those community plan boundaries. If someone was looking at the general plan, they would quickly know to go to that community plan to find more direction. And this element, this general plan did include the optional elements for agriculture and water. And those outlines that I included or reviewed a few slides ago, those are some of the same topics that were addressed in these two elements from Merced.
Are those the only two optional elements they included? Agriculture and water?
It also included economic development.
So they had three in their plan? Thank you.
Let me ask you a quick question here. You keep talking about different things. We talk about land use. Where do you have petroleum, since we're a large petroleum producer? How do you put that in as part of that economic use?
Petroleum?
Yeah, oil.
That would probably find its way into the land use element from where the locations of where those are occurring and the types of uses that would be allowed near those types of facilities or near those types of resources, as well as in the conservation element, because it is an energy resource. And so it would probably be dealt with there from a resource conservation issue area. The next element is the Sacramento general plan. This is another plan that we prepared. One of the unique features of this that may or may not work for the county, this might be something that's more appropriate for the community plans, is the combination of urban form with land use. So, in general, in the Sacramento general plan, rather than just thinking of land use on a horizontal landscape, so just colors on a map flat, we thought about what the buildings would look like, and provided direction for how many stories different buildings should be, how far away from the streets they should be, really getting at the architecture and urban form of the community as a whole. And we incorporated that into the general plan. It had never really been done before, but it's worked out very successfully, and a lot of investment has occurred within the city because it has this direction and flexibility when it comes to how development occurs related to urban form. This is a plan that actually incorporated the existing community plans. So this, I think, is more applicable to how Ventura could consider updating its general plan. Sacramento had 10 existing community plans. We went through a process of reviewing those, cleaning out all of the policies that were redundant with citywide issues, and incorporating them physically into the general plan. So the Sacramento general plan has an introduction, and it has a separate background report, but the policies has introduction, goals and policies across 10 different elements, community plans, and then the implementation program. And so the whole package, the whole general plan is within one document. The Marin County general plan, this... Okay, sorry, I thought I heard a question. Marin County general plan really set the stage for how sustainability and climate change would be addressed in general plans. This was one of the first general plans to address greenhouse gas emissions back in 2007. It's based on the idea of sustainability. One of the other unique features of this is that it does only include three elements. Those are natural systems, the built environment, and socioeconomics. So Marin County chose to address the seven required elements and a lot of other issues that were important within only three elements of their general plan. One of the other unique features of this plan that you may want to consider is the use of benchmarks or indicators as a tracking mechanism for general plan implementation. This is essentially an indicators report. We already read a report that was produced recently on county-wide indicators that was focused more on economic development. We thought it was really great here for Ventura County, but that's the type of idea that was incorporated in here, very innovative, but it does require a lot of work to track and monitor all of those different indicators over time. So there's, it has a cost to including that type of feature within the general plan. I mentioned the Hayward general plan, and I talked about their web-based plan. One of the other key features of this that I've already talked about is the integrated climate action plan. So Hayward's general plan is their climate action plan. They had an existing climate action plan that we incorporated in, and so now everything is housed within the framework of the general plan, and it is their qualified plan for the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. So this is an example or best practice of how to address climate change. The City of Ontario's general plan, this is a completely paperless plan. It's all online, and so it was one of the first general plans in the state to do this. One of the other interesting features of this is that it's really used as the guiding document for how the city runs itself. So it's used, and this was, one of the city manager's goals was to have the general plan be the tool that all the different departments within the city use to manage how they conduct their business. And so, as part of that, every year, as they're doing their budgeting process, they're using the general plan as a tool to do that. And so they've tied this into how they run their local government. Very unique and innovative feature to include for a general plan update. The Sunnyvale's general plan was very similar to that. They approached their update to be, to have the general plan be central to how the city conducts its business. And as part of that, one of the implementation features was to create what's called a mid-range strategic plan, basically tied how they conduct their business over the short term with these longer-term goals that are included in the general plan. Similar to the Marin County plan, it included a lot of indicators across different types of topics, one being community indicators, so things that occur outside the community that the city can't control but are useful in informing how the city is doing and implementing its general plan. And then also service-based indicators that are a reflection or looking back on how the city is conducting its own business. So again, using these indicators as a tool to monitor and track implementation progress was a very important part of their update, and it's a key feature here that we thought was a useful consideration. So finally, some best practices for the general plan update process itself. When it comes to staffing, we have several best practices that we've identified over the years and we think are useful to provide for an efficient general plan update. One of the key things is making sure that the leadership here at the county, both from the boards level but also from the executive officer's office, is involved in the update and supportive of the update. And that goes down one level to having staff dedicated to the process, having a staff person acting as a project manager. The general plan update is very involved for staff, whether you have consultants or not as part of the update process. It really does require a full-time position to help keep track of everything, keep all the parts moving, work with the public and all the other types of...
Ted, will that person also take care of the website?
At the very end? Possibly, but I don't know if they'd have those skills. I don't even have all the technical skills to do that. But then also hiring consultants is important as well. And there's certain parts of a general plan update that are really so specialized that technical experts are needed, so it's important to identify what those needs are and budget for them and have the right folks involved in the update to help support staff. Another really important part of this is involving all the departments. In a lot of local agencies, the general plan is just viewed as a planning document that doesn't affect other departments and what other departments do. I don't think that's the case here, but it's really important to have a framework set up in the process to have representatives from every department involved in every step of the general plan update process to make sure that all of the issues that need to be addressed are being addressed, and that the people with the most experience here at the county have an opportunity to provide their feedback and input into the process as well as to produce the general plan itself. And then finally, building staff redundancy. You never know what can happen over time, and having folks who can be replaced is very important, or having redundancy in your staff is important to making sure that if something happens and you have to shift folks around within departments, that there's someone there to fill in and carry on, and there's not a big learning curve for a new person to come in. Won't spend a lot of time on the work program because that's what we're here talking about today, and by the time we finish this initial process, you'll have a work program completed for the general plan update that you need along with the schedule. And so, preparing a detailed work program at the outset of a general plan update is very important, but we already have that covered here. As far as the schedule goes, keeping a schedule for a general plan update is probably one of the most difficult things to do. There's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of people involved, and there's a lot of unforeseen issues and conflicts that can come up that require time to address and deal with as part of the general plan update. What we recommend is that the board be involved in the process and the schedule for the general plan update, and that means agreeing to a schedule early on in the process, making sure that there's key points throughout that process for check-ins and produce production of key milestone documents, and then providing regular status updates to the boards so that if there are things happening that are going to require more time, you're aware of it and that you're on board with providing more time in the process to deal with those issues. But most importantly is, like I said, there will be things that come up in your general plan update, so you have to be flexible with this.
If you want to stay on schedule, can you oftentimes, I know it won't be all the time, but can you oftentimes just make sure you have more resources to be able to stay on schedule?
Yes, that is one of the, one of the easiest ways to stay on schedule is to put more resources into something, either from the staff level or consulting level.
So you can do things concurrently, or you run into a problem, you can go after those problems.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just, I, we gathered together just a few timeframes for general plan updates, what they were supposed to be and what, how much time it actually took here, unless you had another question?
Oh, that, go ahead.
Okay.
That should be part of that.
Okay. So the Sacramento general plan, that was initiated in 2004, and it didn't get finished until 2009, so five years. It was supposed to only be a three-year program. It took two extra years. Merced County, 2007 to 2013, it was supposed to be done in 2010. So again, it took a few more years. San Joaquin County started in 2008. It's ongoing. There've been a lot of issues that have delayed the schedule. Hayward was started in 2012, and it was supposed to be done in July of 2014, and it was done in July of 2014. It got done on time. The reason for that is that there was very strong direction from the city council that it needed to get done on time. They put the resources towards the project. The city manager was on board, helping to push the project forward, and it got done within the timeframe that it was set. But it took a lot of effort on staff's part, and they had to put off some other projects to focus on the general plan update to get it done on time. So it's a great example of a project getting done on time and also the types of resources that it takes to do that.
Well, now, I'll ask this question. I didn't know you had more on that.
Oh, yeah.
So, is the, is the plan that we have in front of us, this two-part, particularly if we go with the two-part approach, et cetera, is three years a reasonable length of time for a general plan update?
From the timing standpoint, what we've included in the options are a technical update, which would only focus on updating background information and updating policies. That's three years. The larger, expanded approach that includes a lot more community involvement, visioning work, issues identification, dealing with alternatives, that's a five-year timeframe. So the recommended is the longer timeframe, but it could be done in a shorter timeframe if desired, but it would include less, fewer components.
So Ted, for each milestone that you have, is there a budgeted amount per milestone?
Amount of time.
For example, if we have a three-year, a five-year, then you have a budgeted amount, and then you look at it and say, to make sure we're on time and the funding's there to, to take care of it.
Yeah, that, it can be set up that way, yeah.
Okay. So that way you can measure the output or the milestones, and, okay.
Yep. And then from a community outreach standpoint, there's several best management practices that we've developed in conducting these programs. One is making sure that the outreach program has many facets to it, and we generally organize these into an inclusive program, so including as many people as possible, being instructive, having an educational program for the community, and making sure it's validating so that people, as they provide input, they see that it's making a difference, that they're being heard, and that it's being reflected in the general plan update. Using both traditional and technological advances in how things are distributed is very important. Not everyone uses the internet or accesses websites for information. Some people feel more comfortable coming to a community workshop to talk about what the issues are, but others aren't comfortable doing that or they don't have time to do that. So providing a means for them to do it online can help ensure that they have an opportunity to participate in the general plan update. So having a good mix of these types of options is important.
I don't see a survey up there, and I, the City of Thousand Oaks, for example, surveys a quarter of their residents every few years. And to me, that's a really good way to get out and get information, give good options there, and hear from the community in a pretty succinct way instead of having to have, you know, workshops all over the place. And I'm just wondering if that might be one of the options. I think the City of Pasadena did that with their successful general plan update, and just got, you know, thousands of responses that way, and I believe that would help us really find that there is a, you know, a message out there that there, that the public is giving us, and we can use that to incorporate our changes.
Yeah, and we've, we've used surveys. We have one being presented in the town of Windsor up in Sonoma County in a couple of weeks for that general plan update.
Is it a mailed survey?
No, it was telephone.
By telephone?
Yeah, it was assigned, yeah, a validated survey.
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing about that, but I was thinking more of a, one that, you know, you can take the time and read and have a return envelope and all that so you can get that information, but telephone's another way of doing, I guess.
Sure.
They incorporated it online also. People could go online, but also the select households also got mailed ones.
Just a few more best practices. One is making sure the general plan update maintains its visibility, so keeping information going out, even if it's just updates on what's been going on. Sometimes if there's nothing really going on, just going back to some of the information that was collected and making it interesting to people, just so that it's, people are kept aware. A five-year process or even a three-year process is a long time to keep people interested. And so having mechanisms to keep it in front of people's faces is important. And that gets with outreach in early and often, but this is more important to those, and tying them in with those milestones. Making sure that the public has an opportunity, as things are produced during the update, to weigh in on them and to review them and provide feedback is very important. And making sure that's done early in the process helps to address any issues with people not being kept informed of what's going on with the update. kept informed of what's going on with the update. And then diversity and engaging specifically non-English speaking communities as part of a general plan update is important, especially when we think about issues like healthy communities and ensuring that there aren't any communities or groups left out of the update process. Having that information conveyed across various types of language is important and in different mediums. But what we found most effective is working with the groups who already work with those groups, whether it's churches or social organizations. Those are the best ways to outreach to those traditionally, those groups who are traditionally not participating in planning processes and things of that nature. So my last slide, last one? Oh, one more after that, the fun one. The last slide on best practices is just a few other things. One is conducting concurrent planning processes. In a lot of general plan updates, we do side projects that are linked to the general plan, although they're not part of it. One is, and a good example is a zoning ordinance update. Your zoning ordinance has to be consistent with the general plan. So typically, if the general plan gets updated, there's a lot of different things in the zoning that need to be updated as well. You can save a lot of time by overlapping those processes as well as some costs associated with the environmental review of those different planning processes if you have them both within the framework of the EIR that's prepared for the general plan. Another is to not reinvent the wheel. General plan updates are ongoing all over the state, in fact, all over the country. And so there's a lot of good ideas that get generated and used in other places and they're perfect to apply to a general plan update here or in any other place. And then finally, make sure that you're considering the potential for a legal challenge to your general plan update. And this usually occurs around the environmental document. But one of the most effective way to avoid that is to have, having a good outreach program, keeping everyone informed and engaged in the process, listening to people, addressing their issues. It won't do away with the potential for a lawsuit, but it goes a long way in being aware of what those issues are and what potential is out there. And we always recommend that your county council review draft documents, specifically the general plan itself and the environmental document before it goes out, to make sure that everything is meeting the letter of the law and the county is comfortable with publishing those documents. So my final slide deals with costs. And Jim will talk a little more about this when he gets to the end of the work program options. But general plan updates, they aren't cheap. They're probably the most expensive thing from a planning standpoint that a city or county can undertake. Here's just a range of costs for several cities and counties that we were able to gather this information from. As you can see, they range from a million dollars from a smaller city of 50,000 to 100,000, all the way upwards of $5 million for El Dorado County. That went through several iterations and there was a lawsuit in that. So it's kind of an outlier. But as a whole, just taking this sample, on average, and again, these are just consulting costs, except for a couple of those with the asterisk. Cities and counties paid, on average, $2.1 million for a general plan update, just in consulting costs. That's not including their staff costs. The counties alone, the average there is 2.7 million in consulting costs. So it's not an inexpensive process to go through. And this just gives you an idea of what the costs other jurisdictions have been paying in recent years.
So if you take the cities out of your mix, you're saying if you just look at counties, counties are 2.7 billion?
Yeah, of just this sample.
Of just this.
Yeah.
And some of those are quite a number of years ago.
Yeah, and obviously El Dorado drives that average up quite high. So if there aren't any other questions, I can turn it back over to Jim.
Thanks, Ted. So we're at the final part of our presentation. We're going to talk about our recommendations for you, for our work program, for the general plan update and some options, and then the costs of those. And just going back to the previous slide Ted had, we didn't have on there Monterey County, which is at $10 million and counting. But they've been through at least two lawsuits and they have people just at each other's throats for years and years and have sworn, Larry and I did some work for them many years ago, on one side, and they swore they'd never, never reach agreement with the other side. So that's been true. And it's been really expensive for everybody. And that's just the public costs. So just to summarize what we've talked about before, our key conclusions are that about the general plan lacking the vision and guiding principles, being technically deficient, poorly organized, and doesn't really meet contemporary planning standards. And based on the workshops and our stakeholder interviews with you and others, and our reading, also in research of what's going on in the county, there's clear support for a broad range of consideration of non-mandatory issues to be addressed in the general plan. That's kind of our broad conclusions. And that's in part what our recommendation to you is based on in terms of the scope and content of the general plan update. So our recommendation is that you conduct a general plan update, a comprehensive general plan update with a full update of the background report, a visioning process. It includes development of vision and guiding principles, a alternatives analysis, identifying vision, excuse me, issues, assets and opportunities leading into the vision, an alternatives analysis. And this has some open-ended parts to it. And we can talk about that later if you want. But probably evaluating some type of growth alternatives or policy alternatives and addressing some other current county issues that we've mentioned. Then prepare a really user-friendly general plan and address the area plans by updating them and making them consistent with the general plan and then preparing a program, EIR. The technical update is a pared-down version of that. And essentially, it strips out the vision and guiding principles, the robust public outreach effort, and it has a more, no alternatives analysis, and really has, addresses the area plans in a minimal way just to make them consistent, internally consistent with the general plan. You would still prepare a program, EIR, on that effort as well. So Ted has already summarized in detail some optional topics, but there are others that you could address as well that we point out, additional traffic modeling and analysis, property and land use change requests. This is a very interesting one. We've been through this a couple of times and I'm not a strong supporter of it. And we can talk about that a little bit if you want. Then we talked about economic development. Urban design guidelines for some of the communities is another possibility. And then Ted talked about all of these optional elements. I think, as Ted pointed out, some of these seem to be more relevant to you and probably more appropriate to be included in the plan than others. But this is clearly a policy decision on the board's part with advice from the planning commission about really how broad a range of issues you want to deal with and how you want to deal with them. And I should point out that, in my view, in most cases, creating a optional element is a way of emphasizing that topic that might otherwise be addressed in the general plan throughout some of the other elements, but is not emphasized the way it is and singling it out as a separate element. So for example, on water issues, whether you have a water element or not, your general plan will deal with a full range of water issues in terms of water resources and water supply in different areas of the general plan. Singling it out as a separate element, you would deal with those issues, but you may expand on those and have a greater emphasis in certain areas that you might otherwise not have if they're spread out. So this is a consideration for a separate element for a topic that will be addressed. And in contrast, economic development, typically, there are very limited areas where that would show up in the general plan without it being a separate element. A little bit in land use probably, maybe a little bit in facilities and services. So that's one that if you don't pick that as a separate element, probably not going to find much of its way into the general plan. So there are some considerations that we can talk about there as well. Public engagement options.
Before you go to public engagement, if I could.
Say again?
Before you go to public engagement, I just want to try to, I actually want to go back to a couple of things. On this slide, how critical is it that in this very first phase where you're trying to come up with a work plan and the cost and all that, that we identify all of the optional elements? You know, how flexible can we stay for how long in terms of what optional elements we identify? Or another way to ask a question is, how much do these optional elements add to cost and workload? Can you just kind of help me with that a little bit? It's, you know, there's an awful lot for us to bite off here in terms of kinds of policies to set. So, but I want to be able to have us get going. But do we have to, you know, from your perspective, do you say, hey, you have to know exactly which optional elements you're going to do now? Or can that be something that can be decided in a month, in two months, in terms of optional elements?
Well, it's a good question. And the short answer is, you probably don't have to decide right now about these elements. As I mentioned earlier, some of the topics, let's just, we begin a general plan project with doing the background report, existing conditions. And some of those topics get addressed, whether you choose to have it called out as a separate element or not.
Water.
Doesn't matter. Even some economic related issues, demographics and population are addressed in the background report, and water. And some elements of climate change are addressed in terms of doing the emissions inventory. So you don't have to make a call on having a separate element there as you're doing the background report. There may be a few topics that you want to include in there just to preserve your options for later on. You also, as I understand it, you'll be budgeting this project over several fiscal years. So you don't necessarily have to budget for an element that's going to be developed three years from now in the first year of the project.
Okay.
So having said that, I'll go back and look at it from a practitioner's perspective. And you're going to ask, in all likelihood, you're going to ask for some help from consultants and you're going to put an RFP out that says, here's the work we want you to do, give us a bid on it. And you could have a section in there that says, oh, here's some things we're thinking about, optional elements. Tell us how much you charge us for those. We're not going to budget for that right now, but let's get you on the record for what that would cost. And so you could have a reserve cost over there that you could reflect on as the project went down. And then, a year or two down the road, as you're getting through the issues and opportunities and starting the vision, then maybe it emerges that your structure is more clear to you and what you need to do. So.
And so, now if you could go back, I think it's three slides to your comprehensive approach. It's two slides right there, right? That's your recommended general plan. With this comprehensive approach, you know, basically, I think you're asking us to decide whether to go with a comprehensive approach or go with a technical approach. And my question is, is there something in between those two? And for example, develop the countywide vision and guiding principles, evaluate growth alternatives. If we are a county, and as you said, most of the time county general plans focus on preservation of resources and city general plans focus more on growth, where we have consistently heard from our citizens, there have been any number of surveys, there have been visioning, there have been multiple visioning programs in Ventura County, and they come up with the same vision over and over again, you know, preserve the agricultural land in the open space, keep the city separate, and those kinds of, you know, things from the visioning standpoint. Is there a way to, for the board with input from the planning commission to say, hey, these are visions that we know are there, are core principles of the citizens. Let's not spend a lot of time on that. Let's make sure we take input. Is there something else that we're missing? Are there modifications of that that we can go with? And the same thing in terms of evaluating growth alternatives. In other words, is there something that's in between this and technical that's just not, doesn't have to be as comprehensive in terms of, for example, the time you take on countywide visioning and guiding principles that could be requested and met with?
Sure, there is. We're doing the general plan right now for a small community with a 20-year-old general plan that they said, hey, we still like the vision here. So we don't want to go through a visioning process. Just confirm the vision for us. And so when we got to that step in the process, we worked with staff to kind of clean it up a little bit, just tinker with it. And we ended up spending two full study sessions with the planning commission and town council on that project and completely rewrote the vision. It took a lot more time than what we had anticipated, but we didn't go through any community workshops doing it. It just was done in-house. So it kind of morphed into something larger than people expected once we got to looking at it. But it wasn't as robust as an effort like that. So in that case, or in this case, if there is a vision that comes from an existing strategic plan, the board's vision for the county, that you're happy with, that we just confirm it through a study session and maybe some wordsmithing, sure, we can get rid of that. Alternatives, Merced County, we didn't do any land use alternatives because we didn't change a single acre of land use in the county. That was at the beginning of the process. The decision was, we don't want to do anything with our existing unincorporated urban communities. We have plans for all of those. They're like specific plans. And so we're not going to, the general plan's not going to change any land use there. And we don't want to change the rest, which is all ag land. And so we had no land use alternatives in that process. But we did do, go through an exercise of looking at policy alternatives, which ended up being almost as robust an effort as the land use alternatives, far less technical, much more subjective, because it was, you know, looking at different ways to skin a cat, basically. So sure, those could be reduced. And as a result, your outreach program can be reduced because you don't have as much need to take something out to the community and ask their input and come back with it.
When I have attended these visioning processes, it's remarkable how much unanimity there is on preserving, you know, on this basic land use concept, you know. It's like, so that's what I've experienced. I would attend thinking, hey, this is going to be interesting to see who falls out where. But you don't, you know, you see very marginal differences between people as they get to that.
Well, it's interesting. There was a visioning process that was done a couple of years ago by a nonprofit here, right? I can't remember the name of it, but I did read the report. And we have a guy that we work with that works for a lot of developers on sustainable greenfield projects. He's very, works all over the world, big ULI guru. And we get him on our general plans because he has this other perspective that I think is really helpful. And every time I go through the visioning process, he says, well, I've heard that at the next community up the road. He said, you have to do something unique. And the vision that I read that came out of that process is very similar to the visions that we're doing other places. So, you know, the cynical side of me as a planner would say, there are common themes amongst visions for most of the communities that we work in. Certainly customized here and there, depending on the circumstances. But if you've done visioning, whether it's the county itself or through a countywide effort that you were happy with, there's no reason to go through the whole process. As Ted said, no reason to reinvent the wheel. Just confirm it and refine it. So.
Thank you.
Everything being normal, what's the cost-wise between the comprehensive and the technical, if you're, you know, in a normal type? Is there lots of difference, a couple of million bucks?
We don't do anything. We don't do anything that's normal.
Well, let's assume, you know, that is not, you know, extravagant.
So, here's the, the two cost comparisons, counting both our, you know, I want to talk a little bit about how we got to these numbers for consultant costs, county staff costs. The recommended work program is 3.7 million, the technical update is 2 million. So, just about half.
About half, okay.
Yeah. Still a lot of heavy lifting to do, because counties take, there are so many more topics to address in the county in the technical background report than you have in cities and small places. So you have a, really a large area, a range of topics. So there is just a lot to deal with, even on the technical.
But in our case, because we haven't done it since 1988, the comprehensive would be the recommended.
It would be our recommendation, based on what we've heard through all of the outreach program and the issues that people wanted to address. That's our recommendation. We could probably get at many of those issues with something in between, with reducing some of these efforts, and still have a forum, a public forum, for your constituents to talk about what they wanted, what they saw as the future, what the issues and assets were, and how we address those and developing new policies and programs.
Okay.
So.
Jim, if I could just, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure.
I want to go with the Phase Six, which is the environmental review, which is, to me, as a planning commissioner.
Page.
What you just had, you just had up there? Phase Six?
Phase Six.
Right, that's your program environmental impact review?
Mm-hmm.
All right, how much of that would bring forward some of these other elements that would help us determine whether they're necessary or not, such as an ag element, water element, based on the requirements that will come out of the environmental review?
The, all of those elements would have to have been prepared before we do the EIR, because they're really part of the project description. They're part of the general plan. So it would be a done deal by that point. Now, what might happen with the EIR, and what actually does happen pretty regularly, is that the EIR will look at the policies and the programs and, not recommend, it require revisions to policies, or new policies and programs to increase environmental protection, or increase the mitigation. If the EIR analysis determines that the policies and programs aren't strong enough to fully mitigate, or mitigate as feasible, all of the potential impacts, and a lot of this centers around GSG emission reduction, we're finding, the EIR will recommend additional measures in that one.
So the EIR really is the background, even once we start. So you'd be looking at that document, as far as doing all the other analysis?
The, the EIR?
Right.
The EIR comes at the end of the, just about at the end of the process.
But my point is, is if we know that's what's necessary at Phase Six, the analysis one through five should be looking at, because that's going to be a requirement.
Yeah, you're exactly right. And what we try to do is involve the, the folks that are doing the sequo analysis in the policy development. So we're at the, before the EIR gets started, they're getting their first crack at the policies and programs, saying, you need to strengthen this, or else you're going to find us over here in the EIR suggesting changes to it. And, you know, it all ends up being the same in the end. The problem is that you end up looking at a policy document that then has the EIR recommending a lot of changes to it. Whereas if they're closer, closely matched, then it's a truer, it's going to be a truer document that is what represents the end product. So.
And the state assembly will have a proper SEQA act force in the next 24 months?
Maybe we can get them an exemption.
Oh, I'll leave that to the board of supervisors.
So if we stuck to the same land use that we have now, there'll be less environmental impact, but it won't be any changes, except, you know, that we need to adhere to the new greenhouse gas emissions mandates. So in looking at alternatives and all that, you know, if we're just basically sticking with the same land use.
Yeah, land use doesn't drive all of those impacts, but you're right. I mean, if you change your land use, then there, there would be additional impacts that we would have to address in the secret document. But if, if you keep the same land use that you do now, then you, you still have issues to evaluate relative to your new policies and programs. And there's new information today that wasn't there the last time you did the update.
But also, you didn't really go into any detail about the inconsistencies of our zoning and our general plan, but those would all be things that we would be taking care of also. For example, areas around Oak Park have a zoning that doesn't exist. Or Amundson Ranch is zoned for a city of, you know, 10,000 people, and it's, and it's an open space park, you know. So just kind of fixing those inconsistencies would be necessary. But at least in those two, in cases, it wouldn't be changing the land, you know, the actual use of the land, it was just making it consistent with the zoning and the general plan.
That's right. Yeah, that wouldn't be an environmental impact. You may be making it consistent.
Right.
Yep. Well, should I go back? I can't remember which slide I missed.
You're on 69.
69, okay. Oh, public engagement. So we've given you a, pretty much a laundry list of the possibilities for engaging the public throughout the general plan update process. The items with the asks or asterisks on that list are included in our recommended work program. Some are essential, I would say. You shouldn't start a general plan without having some kind of communication tools, even if it's a technical update. But the, the e-blast, the press releases, newsletters, all pretty simple things to do. Public engagement can be a really expensive part of the general plan update process, and it really depends on how many meetings you have, how many community meetings. That's sort of the largest sin it boils down to. These other things, youth engagement, means of planning directors, events and festival booth, fairly minor. But going, having a series of community meetings, and in our recommended work program, we recommended meeting three times with each of the seven max, which is 21 meetings. The, so that, and those would occur at key points in the process. That might be reduced, based, if you took some of the, these phases out, if you took the visioning out, that might reduce one, one round down to 14. You don't have to do any of those. The, some, some communities, smaller communities, we've held a workshop that everybody comes to. But then typically in the counties, we have gone to, tried to go throughout the county to the different unincorporated communities, key areas. In Merced County, we had 60 of those meetings. In Samuel King County, we had 44, 45? 44 meetings. It gets horribly expensive.
You know, it is great that we can capitalize on the work of the Civic Alliance. I see Sandy Smith here. They had a tremendous outreach. People sat around big maps, and, and they all basically had the same overall result, which was the vision that we all share. We also have the joint land use, joint land use study with the naval base, and that has also come up with the same conclusion of keeping the SOAR boundaries, and it's part of their effort. And that, again, is, you know, that same vision. So it's good that we have these organizations that have gone out there, gotten public input for us. And I know SCAG just did one also. So it's just good that we can use that information that's available.
Sure. Yeah. Especially if they're fairly current, not 20 years old like this town we're working, but relatively current, you can just go through a simple process of, of confirming that. So.
So Jim, in the 45 meetings you had, were they Spanish and English, or town hall meeting type, or?
Well, the, in, in those counties, we've, Ted had mentioned relying on existing groups that are already working with non-English speaking communities. In Merced County, we worked with a group that worked with both the Hmong and the Latino communities. And so we trained their staff to conduct the workshops.
To work with them.
In foreign language, and then just reported us back the, the results. The, we've had some workshops where we do real-time translations, and we'll have Spanish speakers sit collectively at a table, and the translator can translate the information to them and get the feedback.
With earphones and so forth.
With earphones. We've, the most successful outreach to predominantly what we work with is Latino communities, is working through other groups, and who already have trust in the community. So there's a variety of ways to do it. Most of the workshop materials we do are printed in English and Spanish, like if you saw the materials that we did for your three workshops, we had translator at one workshop. We just don't, we don't experience that many Spanish speakers showing up at the planning workshops. We did, and we had a great time in Gilroy.
But if you announce it, they'll attend.
Announce it on the Spanish-speaking radio, television.
Because we've had, we've had healthcare agency meetings, and MAG meetings, and so forth, and, and they work.
Part of it depends on the history, the local history, and how you've done, you do it. So in every community we go into, there may be a different, more successful, most successful effort. And so it has to be customized to your history and experience. So outreach is kind of a really open-ended thing for you, and it's something that you just need to think about, based on your experience in the past, with how, what you, you have found most successful in engaging your constituents on issues of interest, as to what might work best. One of the things I've liked that's worked well in a couple of communities is an event booth, where you just set up a booth and a table, and you have your information boards and handouts and a survey. And it might be the farmer's market, or Thursday night concert, concert series, and you just bring your information out to wherever people are. It's, there are just any number of ways you can get information out. But the, the idea, most of the time, the idea is to drive people to your community workshops, to get people to not so much fill out a survey, but come and participate in the large participatory activities that you have. So those are all possibilities, and you can.
And what is your background with surveys?
With surveys?
I see surveys listed up here, but what's your background with using surveys to, to, to say, these are the three top issues that people identified, or this is the response we got to, questions about whether this should be part of the planning?
I've had sketchy variable results with doing surveys and general plans. We don't do them very often. The one that Ted mentioned that we just did recently was a scientific polling survey. It cost less than $25,000. They polled, made 9,000 calls, polled 300 people. And 300, if you've been involved in polling, is a really good reliable number for a sample community. And it seems, it seems to be really successful. I haven't heard, it's being presented next week to the town council.
My question is less, do you think they're effective than, my question is, how much experience do you have with them? And you said.
I don't have much experience, and my experience has not been good.
All right, okay, thank you.
So I'm probably not the best person to ask about doing surveys.
Right, okay.
So we talked about the updating the area plans. There are, and I think Ted covered this, there are three, three options, reformatting, integrating, or comprehensive update, like you've done on the Satcoy plan, which is obviously the, by far, the most costly. Integrate, we like the integrating option. We think that's the most efficient. But it can, that can get real resistance from the communities who have ownership of their community plans and don't want them to disappear into the general plan. So in Sacramento, it was a very controversial issue.
And I'd like staff to follow up. I'd like to have, perhaps, I'd like to have a report on where do all of the area plans stand as far as their age, how old are the plans, when's the last time they're updated? We have 10 of them, Satcoy being the most recent, so just might give more information on the answer to that question.
Yeah, I think there's even an Amundson Ranch area plan.
Right, right.
Yep. So, and then the additional related topics, we talked about zoning code update to make the zoning consistent with the plan. That has to be done anyway. The concurrent housing element update, you've just gotten a certified housing element, but by the time you get towards the end of this process, it'll come up again, and that'll need to be done. And then the question is on the wildlife corridor connectivity protection overlay zone, that, as I understand it, has been authorized. And then the question is whether or not it gets, if it somehow is attached to the, some point in the general plan update, or proceeds on its own. So, back to this slide, costs. We, we asked, we, based the consultant costs on our experience with estimating general plan costs. We do this a lot. There are differences every place, though. There's not a standard formula that we can use. So we did our best to capture what we think are probably the, the range of costs and what assumptions we made. County staff costs, I have to tell you, I've never had to do that before, which is to estimate what the, the public agency staff costs are to manage and participate in the general plan. And this is not taking responsibility for preparing parts of the general plan. This is just responding, this assumes, those costs assume, the consultants do 100% of the general plan. And the staff costs are based on managing the consultant team, providing information when, in the, for the technical report, reviewing the reports when we prepare a background report. A dozen of your departments will be involved in reviewing and commenting on the background report to make sure that we properly characterize their topic. Typically, and we would suggest that for this project, that what we call a technical advisory committee be formed, which is just department representatives. And they would meet periodically to provide input and feedback at, at key points in the time. They would do this the same with the policy document. And then, of course, all the planning staff time in terms of just, we have, typically, we would have project management calls every other week. There's a lot of back and forth of information. So this just is our effort, certainly in coordinating with Chris and Kim, to come up with a reasonable cost for the staff side. Now, the next step is, what, what, what parts of the general plan the staff are actually going to do on the, on the first column? What, what are they going to take the lead in, or take a more active role in, and use a consultant as a technical consultant, as opposed to the lead consultant? And so there's, there's still that, that decision to be made. I don't know when that will be made. It's not particularly relevant to the cost issue, because I think that whether the staff does it or consultants do it, having seen the, your, your, your staff costs, and kind of looking at our range of consultant costs, it's kind of generally the same. But this is a preliminary estimate, so it'd have to be refined once, once you got, got those decisions made. I know, we, this Hayward general plan, that we're just finishing up, the web-based general plan, the staff took a very active role in that, was the face of the project, ran all the public meetings. Ted and I never went to a planning commission meeting, or city council meeting. Staff did all of the, the presentation. But I don't know what their costs were. I never had to estimate their costs. That, our costs still were at $1.4 million.
And Hayward is the city that came in on time?
Yeah.
So their, their staff was very involved, and partially because they were under direction to make sure this thing came in on time, right?
There were a couple of parts where we had divided up the labor, and it turned out that there was just too much for them. And so we took back a couple, like a couple of sections of the background report, and a couple of sections of the policy document. So there was some back and forth like that. We participated a little bit more in the public workshops than they anticipated us. So we had to make some adjustments along the way, because they really were understaffed. But boy, they worked hard, and really ended up, it's a great product, great process. I highly recommend it. It's one of my favorite projects that I worked on, so. projects that I worked on, so. And we did, one thing that we did do that I think really helped was that we, at Ventura Harnish, a few years ago during the recession, when we weren't getting any work, trying to figure out how we could find more work, developed a program called Do It Yourself General Plan, where we would, it's a three-day training session, where we would go into cities, we did it just for city staffs, and train them how to do their own general plans, and give them templates and examples, and help them put together their own plan. Well, we took a variation of that on the Hayward plan, and upfront, before each phase started, we did a half-day or day training session with the staff, sometimes not just the planning staff, but the whole staff, walking through, what's the purpose of a background report, what's going to be in it, what's the template for it, just all the gory details about production. And I think that really helped speed things up, too. So, anyway, it was a great effort, or a great experience. So, the technical update, preliminary costs, you can see that we've basically dropped out a few of the key pieces that were in, in the recommended work program. Still, a relatively costly effort. You've got to do the EIR on it, which is a big chunk. You can see that EIR is a third of the cost. Always galls me as a planner that the SEQA is so expensive.
Sorry, evaluating alternatives, that was, you drop out 350,000 roughly cost.
Yeah.
From, so it depends on how many alternatives, or how many changes we make that require alternative evaluations will, could influence this.
That's correct. It's a big ticket item. It gets very technical. Lots of effort goes into alternatives analysis. And frankly, if you have very few options for change, it's hard enough to develop distinctive options that still fit under these guiding principles if we have those. And if we have a much narrower range of possibilities, it ends up being kind of a, not much, really not very effective.
An academic exercise.
Yeah, academic, I guess would be the good example. And then, we've just taken a stab based on our experience with how much some of these other optional tasks would cost. It seemed to staff, and it probably seemed to you, that the cost of these additional elements seems to be pretty low. But, the reality is that all we're doing is taking, when you're writing the element, is taking policies and programs that might be other places, bringing them together, expanding that effort, or that content. It doesn't require a lot more research. And as Ted pointed out, it doesn't do all the really heavy lifting technical analysis for the water element. We're going to, for our background report and for this work, we're going to depend on all the other work that's being done or has been done on water. The Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, any urban water management plans that cities have done, the groundwater management plans, that wouldn't be done as part of the general plan. All of that information comes from other sources. So, when you pull that together, actually writing the goals and policies and programs is not a huge effort. So. And then, you can see on the updating the area plans, we tried to give you a rough estimate of updating the full comprehensive updates, which would be the most expensive. We kind of took the Saticoi plan as an example, but if you think about it, so that's $660,000. But then, it may include SEQA as well. That may be so robust that you couldn't, like the other two options, bring it in under the umbrella of the general plan EIR. If those are out doing differently, developing different land uses and going through an update like Saticoi did, then you're going to end up probably doing at least, probably a supplement to the general plan EIR in a likelihood. So, it's going to be, so that's an expensive effort for some of the plans. Not all of the plans would necessarily require that robust an update. So, again, I underscore preliminary up here, based on, once we get your preliminary direction, then we'd have to come back and really do some more noodling on some of these cost estimates.
I appreciate you pointing that out, a question for you. But, so, potentially doing a comprehensive update of each of the area plans with less having 10 area plans, you're talking about $5 million to update the area plans?
Yeah, subtracting Saticoi, so, yeah. But I don't think all of them would cost that much, but yeah, potentially, yeah.
And that's if we did them separate, or if we do them as part of this general plan update, would there be significant economies of scale in doing it as part of the general plan update?
I don't think so. Because if you think about it, you're going to do individual outreach to each one of those communities. They're going to do revisioning. You think about what went on in Saticoi in terms of the outreach and the visioning. You're going to end up doing that separately in each one of those communities, and that's what really bumps up the cost.
So, it's the outreach, you say, that bumps up the cost significantly?
Yeah, and you're not going to do a community plan without a lot of outreach in that community, I suspect.
Uh-huh, right, okay.
And when I think about Oak Park, I have the Oak Park MAC, and it's a great forum for being able to have that, and different communities that already have their area plans, that have municipal advisory councils, too. So, we could probably utilize some of the resources we have out there in terms of regular meetings.
Oh, yeah, for sure. And in fact, that was kind of our thinking in general on the general plan update. The outreach had focused on the MACs, because it's an established community organization representative of the community. Nevertheless, updating, I don't know how many meetings were held out on Saticoi, but I would guess it had to be 10 or 20. Is that be right? Anyway, it'd be a lot. Because you really get, on my experience with community plans is, you get a lot of, there's a lot more detailed interest in what's going on in the neighborhood than you get on the general plan update that's much more, less well-defined.
I think with the Saticoi area plan, it started from scratch. The others already exist, and it's refining, so I would think it'd be significantly different.
It could be, yeah. We'd have to...
Just kind of taking out the old and dusting it off, I would think.
Yeah. We'd have to investigate that a little bit more, but, okay. And then, these are just our estimates for the three additional general plan-related cost items. And then, schedule, Ted, I think he'd mentioned the schedule, but this is a real broad schedule showing roughly a five-year work program for the, a five-year schedule for the recommended work program, and then a three-year schedule for the technical update. And that's it. How much time did that take?
You exhausted every minute.
Holy moly. I'm sure glad we didn't ride the train, because it leaves in a half hour.
Just for the public's information, the paper just handed out was that last amendment date of area plans that was provided to, that you must have had readily available, right there, Exhibit 1, Attachment 2. And it generally shows that all of the area plans were done in the 90s, and '89. So, there are some aged area plans.
Well, I swear, we would have been done in an hour had you not asked me and Ted questions.
All right, so.
Sorry it took so long.
I have one other question for the gentleman.
Okay, please.
Before I sit down. And nevertheless, I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate being able to ask questions as we go along. So, if I can be clear, so like in Hayward, you didn't get as involved in the community outreach. Staff did that in Hayward.
We produced all of the materials for the community outreach, all of the posters, all the boards. We worked with staff to structure what the work exercises would be.
Right, but...
And we showed up to help facilitate, but the staff ran the meetings.
Right, okay. And in Hayward, was that the primary community outreach was, I mean, was that the primary public communication was outreach at these meetings?
There were two or three other approaches. They had the general plan advisory committee that met every month, and they used those committee members as community ambassadors. And so, we prepared outreach toolkits for them that they could take into their neighborhoods, that had surveys, that had kind of pared-down versions of the exercises that we would do at the workshops, and they took those into homes and their organizations. The staff did other community group presentations, Kiwanis, Lions Club, that kind of thing. And I think we had a community information booth that was set up.
And do you see community meetings as primarily a place to receive input from those that show up, or as a place to educate people?
Both.
Okay, thank you. That, all right, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? We do have some public speaking requests. Are there any other questions of this lengthy presentation? And you'll see on the backside of the last page, we have questions and direction for final scope development for the, for us to have further discussion on. But first, I'll open up for public comments, and we have, how many cards submitted, Mr. Palmer?
End counting.
End counting. Seven, did you say?
Seven.
I'm going to ask that we, the speakers, and I know you've been here full-time also, but if you can keep your comments to three minutes, I would appreciate it. And where do I have a screen that I have names or, how about giving me the cards?
Sure.
Whatever works for you, Brian.
Would you like to poll our audience? No.
I like to do that. I don't know where that goes. Oh, no, that goes, that's, yeah. All right. And I'll try to read the handwriting here. Oh, well, okay. Yeah, now, I wish I gave it back to you, right? All right, Lynn Rodriguez, from the Watershed Coalition.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the planning commission, Mike Powers. Thank you for the opportunity to briefly address you today about this, I think, very important topic that you're talking about today, the update to the general plan, which I can't say enough how important I think this is as a blueprint document for everything that we do in the county. So, I appreciate all the information about how comprehensive the consultants are recommending it be. I also wanted to emphasize the Watersheds. My name is Lynn Rodriguez with the Watersheds Coalition of Ventura County, sorry. And I wanted to provide the support of the Watersheds Coalition for providing a more, an updated and very robust data-driven background document, as well as the policies and programs for the general plan update. We have completed in the last year our Integrated Regional Water Management Plan update, which was updating the 2006 plan. The Board of Supervisors and many other local entities have adopted this plan. And while the plan isn't policy-driven, it's very focused on addressing resource management in the county in the future, in the next 20 years, and I think is very complimentary with the work that would be done in an update to the general plan, as well as to the development of the sustainable groundwater management plans that are underway, or that will be starting in the next few years. Wanted to provide, I wanted to offer the support of the Watersheds Coalition, which is a very inclusive and diverse stakeholder group, as part of the effort as the plan goes forward, that we would like to be very involved in, in working with the planning staff and consultants to make sure that there's good integration between the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, which the consultant mentioned is one of those documents that would be instructive in moving forward with the development of the general plan update. The investment that has gone into the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan is significant. We've received grant funding for that, preparing that plan, as well as local funds that have been contributed. We got grant money, and a total of $1.25 million have been invested in developing the IRWM plan. And I think it's important that we make sure that we do the best we can to integrate those things. And I think the timing is perfect for the general plan update, because the IRWM probably won't be, it's very fresh and recently adopted. You received, your board received two support letters from two of our watershed committees. The Watersheds Coalition of Ventura County is made up of three watershed committees. Two of them provided a comment letter to you with some support for going forward with close integration between the IRWM process and the general plan update. So, thank you.
Thank you. Certainly agree with you that the coalition work has been valuable for us. Thank you. Laura Gullifson.
Gullifson.
I was going to Gullifson, sorry.
That's fine. Good afternoon. My name is Laura Gullifson, and a special thanks to the Ventura County planners who have been so helpful in our efforts to finally achieve library justice. Ever since, the City of Ventura and the Ventura County Library Service Director unjustly and illegally closed the Wright Library five years early, over 70,000 citizens in the East End not only lost our library, but we lost access to multiple community services. So, the other day, I was shocked when I learned at a neighborhood council meeting that a new library in Saticoi that was going to serve 1,000 citizens was opening this summer, and that there's going to be, might be, a small kiosk in the Ventura County Center. And that's all well and fine, but our taxes of $1.2 million, those of us in the East End, the 70,000, goes to the Ventura County Library Services, and we might get a kiosk? I just can't figure the justice of this for sure. So, how did we get into this situation in the first place? Well, in 2006, a perfect storm was brewing. Jackie Griffin was fired as the director of libraries in Berkeley. She sued that library system. The library system settled, and the lawsuit, settled the lawsuit instead of going to court. Supervisor Long and our former mayor, Bill Fulton, went to Berkeley, and they recruited her. They offered her more money, a larger car and housing allowance, and that was in November 2006. Mike Powers, the current CEO, also came in 2006 to Ventura, and the Moore Park City Library left the Ventura County Library Services in 2007. One of Mrs. Griffin's first actions was to fire Alan Longville, who had been the deputy director of library services for 26 years.
Mrs. Gullifson, your time is up. So, is your key point, is you want the general plan discussion to include a more robust library services discussion?
Because our library services are dependent on the county.
Thank you very much.
Gosh, I did my, I did this over and over on my kitchen timer, and I should have a lot further than this in three minutes.
I'm sorry, thank you.
I had two minutes?
You had three.
Three, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Jean Boyer?
Oh, she fired the director.
Well, I would like to ask that we really stay focused on the general plan and the need for services under the general plan, as opposed to personalities and the history on that. I really would prefer...
How can we be fair if we, all those planners, Mrs. Long, didn't know anything about the history? They were really surprised that the 70,000 of us, five years ago, had gone without library services.
Mrs. Boyer, would you like to speak to the need for library services? I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll just finish up what she said. Mistakes were made at closing the Wright Library. A solution is at hand. Mary Ann Coffey of Friends of Library has suggested the city and the county could jointly purchase the former Fresh and Easy Market at Telegraph and Day Roads. There are many benefits to the location which could be further explored. There's ample parking... There's ample parking. The library could partner with one of the local coffee shops, bring in students from nearby Ventura College and Foothill High School, and raise additional money. It's never too late to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I hope you don't mind if I dispense with the hellos. I don't have a lot of time. This is in relationship to the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency. We have, we are the groundwater sustainability agency for that area. We've been approved by the Department of Water Resources. Here are some suggestions for the County RMA Planning Department as it relates to groundwater sustainability planning agencies. GSPs, or groundwater sustainability plans, have authority over spacing requirements of well placement and groundwater extraction. And because of that authority, we think that RMA should provide a checkbox on the permit application for all ministerial discretionary projects, so that we can comment on those issues. The OBGMA should be recognized, and really, all groundwater sustainability agencies should be recognized as a responsible agency in regards to well placement and groundwater extraction. The OBGMA should be recognized as a commenting agency for anything related to groundwater quantity, quality, availability, recharge area, and wellhead protection areas. The planning should include comments and recognition in the initial study assessment guidelines about the responsibility of OBGGMA and the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. There should be a rewrite to the goals, policies, and programs related to resources to include mention of groundwater sustainability agencies and their implementation goals, measurable objectives, and regulatory authority, blah, blah, blah. I have provided a memo to the Chair of both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, as well as Kim. The rest of the memo deals with government code sections and water code sections, and the coordination that needs to take place between our agencies. If I may take off my OBGMA hat for a second, I'd like to throw out some issues if I, oh, I don't have time. Try to deal with, develop goals, policies, and programs for quagga mussels and the threat that they provide to the Santa Clara River watershed, please. Area plans can be different, and they should be different. They're developed by the local agency. Programs that are not funded and implemented really represent a failed general plan, and it just doesn't work. If you don't give them the money to staff to implement the policy, you don't really have a general plan. And if you don't have a general plan that's consistent with itself because of those policies, you cannot have a zoning ordinance that's consistent with the general plan. It's got to be done as a whole. I have a lot more. I'm sorry. I'm way over my time.
No. Thank you, Mr. Baggerley, and to all. This is the first of what will be opportunities to speak on elements and components of the general plan, as you heard over what will be years of work.
Since I was here in 88, and I was here in 2005, we're back doing the same thing all over again. You'll hear from me again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Greetings and respect to all. Water. The fundamental issue of sustainability in Ventura County is water. Agriculture must have a secure source of water that is provided at a reasonable price if we want to retain our rural assets. Throughout Ventura County, planning commissions and their legislative bodies are at odds over whether there is sufficient water for new development. In Oxnard, we rely on an urban water management plan from 2010 that does not account for the ongoing drought and the statewide reductions or the curtailment of conservation credits for groundwater pumping by the GMA. Our current water shortage and delivery systems are insufficient to carry us into the future. The numerous entities responsible for providing our water have not found a way to work together to ensure regional water supplies or protection of stressed water basins. Now, there's been mention of an integrated management plan going on. I haven't looked at that too much. I just know, looking at the individual pieces, things are a mess. Fox Canyon GMA claims to be ahead of the curve, but the truth is, the aquifer has never been depleted at a faster rate. Seawater intrusion is accelerating. The GMA still allows self-reporting, and a replenishment fee is in place to at least attempt to bring the basins back into some sort of sustainable yield. United is facing unprecedented federal regulatory restrictions on what it can discharge from Lake Piru. The Quagga Mussel and the Endangered Species Act present major problems. United has no new surface storage in the planning or development stages, to the best of my knowledge. I apologize if they do indeed have plans. Cayega's, Cayega's ability to supply state water hangs by a thread that a seismic event could snap at any time, resulting in a levee or canal being breached with a loss of water deliveries up to six months or longer. The job has simply gotten too big for any one agency, district, or purveyor to handle. This is why the county must find a way to bring all of the players together and find a workable solution, starting with its general plan update. If we value our quality of life, we must plan for our water future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nash.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, Commissioners. My name is Marland Hale. I'm an independent acoustical consultant from Simi Valley. For the past 20 years or so, I've worked in and for the county of Ventura and some of the communities in regards with noise issues throughout the county. And I'm here just to bring everyone's awareness, and I know planning knows about this, there is a technical flaw in the current general plan under noise, having to do with noise generators and the position of noise monitoring equipment relative to sensitive receptors. In the existing plan, which carried through from the previous general plan, much to our surprise, many consultants has brought this to the attention of the county, I'm told it's going to be fixed this go-around, but since it made it through 10 years ago, I'd like to make sure that everybody's aware of it. It calls out for the measurement instrument, a sound level meter, to be placed at the surface of the sensitive receptor building. Nobody in acoustics would ever make a measurement like that. It doubles the acoustic energy at the building and gives you incorrect information. You make a search, a Google search on this subject, and you'll find that consistently a standoff distance of three feet to 10 feet is called for, both in federal, state, and county and municipal codes. And so Ventura is the only one I'm aware of that says, stick your meter right up against the wall. So that's all I wanted to do, is just make you aware of it. It passed through the last revision. I'd sure hate to see it pass through this one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bruce Smith.
Staff, I assume you got that comment.
Right. What can you possibly know about general plan?
I have no idea. I'm Bruce Smith. I'm former manager of the Plans Ordinances in Regional Planning Section of the County Planning Division. And all the criticisms of the 1988 general plan, right here. But in the way of background, it took us one year, no consultants, EIR included, and we made the timeframe. And what motivated us to do that was, we were on a quarter order to do that under stipulated agreement, because we were being challenged for the legal adequacy of our general plan. It was a phenomenal effort at the time, but it is correct. There's a lot of suggestions for improvement, which are very good suggestions, for clarity, et cetera, and especially in terms of providing the background information to the reader, the context in which the goals, policies, and programs would appear. I take issue, however, with the consultants' almost cookie-cutter approach of saying, well, perhaps we should go back to seven elements. That's really, really old thinking. The reason elements were created, they were created at different points in time, and every single new issue that came along, a new element was required. And in fact, I was part of the Californian American Planning Association recommendation for rewriting general plan law, and we came up with a recommendation of five chapters: resources, hazards, land use, public facilities and services, and then this other amorphous category, which was kind of like other. They really work as a structure. And we found that when you have separate elements, you really, they're kind of standalone documents, and it's really hard to see how it all fits together. It's a daunting task, because it covers so many subjects anyway, but I would suggest you not simply go to the separate elements. I would suggest you make them chapters or sections within generally the framework. If you have to add a new chapter dealing with other topical issues, that's great. That'd be my suggestion. Technology is great. We didn't have it. We had cool pens and nabacuses in 1988, and absolutely using the technology to improve the appearance and readability of the plans. I'll also take issue with the statement that the area plans are inconsistent, or many of the area plans, goals, policies, and programs are inconsistent with county general plan. County general plan says an area plan can be more specific and restrictive than the county general plan. They are not, and they cannot be inconsistent with the county general plan. That's a, the entire general plan, including area plans, have to be internally consistent. They don't have to be identical. Also, I take issue with, lastly, the programs. They're stating that the programs should only be those which implement the policies. Our programs go beyond that. They implement the goals where they may not be specifically related to a policy that guides the day-to-day operations. And the reason for that is because there's many different programs out there that may in the future result in changes, and it's an informational aspect to that. So if you truncate it down only to the implementation of the policies, a lot of the programs will simply vanish and disappear. But the other criticism of funding of those programs is a valid point. So with that, I thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Lynn Gray Jensen. Those are all three names there, Lynn.
Thank you. I know it's late, so I'm going to try to be brief here. I'm Lynn Jensen with Ventura County CoLab, and I'm kind of speaking off the cuff, because I haven't heard a lot of this before, so it's very interesting. When you come to the county of Ventura, the one thing that stands out to you is the agricultural land that's in production. And I think for us, we really want to encourage, as part of the vision, that these working landscapes that contribute to our economy stay viable. And rather than focusing on trying to convert private land to public land, which takes land out of production, we think it's important to keep our county tax base here while supporting local products for the community to enjoy, and also the contribution to other states in the world of our healthy fruits and vegetables, which I think we're very proud of here. We support this separate economic development element. That seems like something that's really missing in our general plan, is talking about the economics and the sustainability, and it should address the agricultural industry, oil production, mining, and tourism, all of which are out in the unincorporated areas. It's completely separate from the idea of the Guidelines for Orderly Development, which discourages urban sprawl. This really, this economic development element should be considering businesses, important businesses, that are functioning out in the unincorporated areas. And we do agree that the Guidelines for Orderly Development discourage urban sprawl, and that's a good thing, but we need to look at these businesses and their contribution to the job housing numbers and the economic sustainability of the county, and also opportunities for our younger generation to have jobs here. The ag element sounds interesting, but we believe that the ag land cannot just be preserved by a land use designation. Again, ag must be economically viable. Otherwise, these green belts that we talk about a lot will become brown belts. And I think part of that, we need to explore agricultural processing and distribution needs for the ag industry. Absolutely, water infrastructure is going to be very important down the road, and of course, farmworker housing, of which is probably going to have to be in the unincorporated areas as well, in places. And as far as the outreach, we need to make sure that there is public input that's encouraged in the process, and that includes the very busy business community to participate. I think sometimes they're too busy to show up. And if we are considering an agricultural element, we'd like to see some kind of a workshop with the agricultural communities particularly invited to talk about the agricultural considerations. So that's all I have today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn.
Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission, Sandy Smith, appreciate the nod to the Civic Alliance, and I'm sure over the next five years of the play-out of this plan, the alliance will play a role in providing data to this process. And I'm hoping that I won't be here speaking to you five years from now on this issue, and then I'll be retired and put to bed. I'm here today speaking on behalf of the Ventura County Economic Development Association, and my role as Chair of that. I did not compare notes with Ms. Jensen coming up here, but I'm going to read quickly a couple of things, only in that I urge the Board to include the economic development element, or chapter, or whatever you choose to separate that and focus upon it within the document, as well as the ag element. And I would actually say all of the elements that have been recommended by your consultants for addition into the plan, given the price of these, and particularly the price of the economic element and the impact that that has on the economy, that's a great investment. Specifically making that recommendation because we have the Guidelines for Orderly Development, and we have land use plans that we have in this county, and those policies, and the need, again, to the nod to the alliance for a balance of social equity, the economy, and the environment as we move forward on the adoption of this plan. So again, I would ask for that inclusion. And then again, maybe putting my alliance hat on briefly in my work there with the Center for Public Dialogue, support greatly the need for an inclusive public process to make sure that the public has and the stakeholders have adequate say into the formation of this document. I appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Kevin Cannon.
Hello, Kevin Cannon. And I just wanted to touch on the thing he just said about the public outreach. I've been to the previous workshop, and I've come here today, and these consultants are real professionals in their approach. They have this way of bringing people together personally to sort of have a touchy-feely session, I'll call it. I would urge the Board to go the other route and have it be more frequent drafts that are published online, and then garner the public input through electronic way, so that we don't have to take our time to show up at these meetings, because a lot of times you could get a lot more input from a lot more people if you just didn't only have meetings where the public could come and speak for two minutes. So that's my one point that I wanted to make today. I really urge you to, like, cut the costs of the public workshops and have it more electronic feedback, with more frequent drafts for more transparency of every work product that's produced. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the input.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Debra Pendry, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And I just wanted to make a couple of observations. I did sit in on the Cacita I did sit in on the Casita Springs workshop, and they had an exercise where they gave us, so, six to 10 dots, and they had the sheets up with the new and changing challenges, transportation, parks, things of that nature, and climate change was one of them. It seemed like a trick question. I put all my dots under climate change, right? It would appear that that should be the driving force behind the general plan. And I would submit to you, if we don't address climate change at the top priority, transportation, noise, land use, whatever the case may be, is kind of a moot point. It doesn't mean squat if we don't address climate change. The images we saw of sea level, you know, that's not obscure. That's real. We've lost whole island nations around that. And so we would suggest that climate change, and I saw in a graph that where they obviously analyzed all the dots, that climate change was dead last. That broke my heart, but that's okay, because what I think we need to think about is, in the presentation, we saw those key words constantly: sustainability, resiliency, greenhouse gases, climate change. I think the outreach is going to be really important to reconcile the community to this disconnect for climate change to be dead last in that analysis. So going comprehensive seems valuable. If we go technical, that's kind of feels like a Band-Aid, kind of being reactive rather than proactive. It's kind of like, okay, sea level, okay, sea level's coming up, 2030, we got to think about that. Let's give everybody a snorkel and mask. No, that, you know, that can't really work. We have to look 40 years out, maybe more than, say, even 25 years. So I just wanted to make those couple of comments and suggest that we're in it for as many bake sales as necessary to do this, and I'd like to donate the first $20 to the fund, and let's do this right. Let's be comprehensive. It's worth it, you know? We can't have the conversation about how much is this going to cost, really? How much is it going to cost if we don't do this? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Oh, please don't. Yeah, you will. You have to report it, you know? It's all kinds of, yeah. Too much red tape. Thank you, though, Debra. Very generous. Thank you.
It would cost him $300 to take that $20.
Okay, no further cards? Anyone else sitting out there with a burning desire to speak at this time? Again, there will be other opportunities. This is the very first step. Okay. We'll bring it back then for...
Oh, of course, I always ask my other commissioners if they have any input, not hearing any. I got the look for Commissioner Onside. No, we look forward to the process, particularly at the Planning Commission. We get a lot of this information. I look forward to a lot of these people again, and we look forward to the direction from the Board of Supervisors and the $4 million funding. Well, I'm looking for five. I got six, I got seven. That's all, Madam Chair.
Board members, I know on this back sheet, we had a list of proposed discussion points for direction, and whether or not the Board wishes to tackle that now, have further discussion? Yes.
Just some thoughts on this.
Schedule another.
Pardon?
Go ahead.
Okay. Having a background in planning, this kind of stuff really gets me going. I think there are two major reasons why we need to do this update. One is we have deficiencies, particularly in zoning that isn't consistent with the general plan. That definitely has to be fixed. And then also, we need to meet new mandates, integrate the Climate Action Plan into the whole document. I think it's a great idea, as well as integrating the healthy communities throughout where we can. But I think the other main reason we need to update this is explained right here by these gentlemen who didn't know that our vision is the guideline of orderly development. You build in the cities, you leave the unincorporated land as it is with agriculture and open space. And I think we really need to enunciate that, and we need to have that go throughout our general plan. That is our vision, it has been, and I don't think the community wants that to change from all the outreach sessions that I've attended, and it's pretty unanimous out there. Also, I like the idea of that resource management section having, right now, it has open space and conservation. I think it's a good idea to put water and agriculture in there, too, and how they are all related, too, you know? When you think about it, all those are very much related. But I like the idea of a resource management section and putting those resources in there. So I would go with that suggestion. Also, in terms of the suggestion of the consultants, instead of just a circulation element, having a mobility element, I think that's great. And so when you're talking mobility, you're not just talking roads, which is all our circulation element is right now, but mobility would also be bike lanes, and there would be pedestrian orientation and even transit, you know, our transit vision. So I just think having that mobility section is a great idea also. In terms of reaching out to the community, I do like the idea of doing a survey. I think what Mr. Cannon was pointing out, that we could do this kind of thing electronically, and it could be very successful, having people be able to give us their input electronically. We have the technology. And then also looking in terms of a horizon, I like the idea of 2050. That's what SOAR is looking at right now, too, and I just think it's a, what most, I would think, a lot of the updates now are going to that horizon. So I think that's a good idea. I'd also like the idea of finishing while I'm still here. So in that timeframe, I'd like to do it within my terms, so that's kind of where I'd look at it. It does seem like there are things in here we don't need to have. There are some good bells and whistles there, but I would focus just on the ones that I mentioned, which was the mobility, that resource management one that has agriculture in it and water. That'd be the only two additions that I'd be looking at, as well as doing the mobility to be more comprehensive in our circulation element. So those are my thoughts, and I appreciate the information and the good suggestions from the public. We have a lot of new things to look at, you know? Water's a huge one, and I think if we can get that going in our general plan and help that will be very, help be comprehensive, and also it's a blueprint for development. If you don't have water, it's really hard to develop anyway, too.
Supervisor, anything to add here at the moment, right now? Later?
You know, just looking at some of the questions to ask, have we captured the essence and understand them? I think we need a lot of help. Our general plan, as was mentioned by our consultants, that we really need to upgrade our general plan, and I think, looking at it, that we should go the comprehensive way. You know, that's extremely important, because if we're going to do it, I think one of the speakers said it well, we might as do it now. Do it now, or else, you know, we're going to be sorry later. And also, on the options, I think that Bruce Smith mentioned something I think that might be important, he says, instead of having those options be part of the general plan, maybe that'd be chapters. I'm not sure if we had to look at that, you know, as opposed to being part of that, some of them anyway. And as a public engagement, I think we have the MACs, we have the Internet, we have quite a few other venues that we can use. For example, we have a Spanish-speaking newspaper, Vida, that can help us out, you know? And we have town hall meetings, and I think we can do that. And of course, you know, I think the staff ought to work with the consultant, and I think they ought to know the general plan, because it was mentioned, we have, if individuals leave, we have other people that can take over and not start over again. If we rely on the contractor and the consultant, once they leave, you know, they take all the knowledge with them, and I think that our staff should be involved in that. And of course, there's other issues. The other thing that I have a question is, the funding, is that, where's the funding going to come from? Is it budgeted in this year? And other elements, too, that go with that, you know? Where's the funding going to come from? But I think it was a good report, and I think we had a lot of good input from the community, and comprehensive, I think, is the way to go.
Thank you. Supervisor?
Thank you. The first thing I'd like to say is that we've had one discussion so far at the board level about this, and it was a discussion that's very specific to the Planning Commission, for the Planning Commissioners here, and that was, you know, do we set up a general plan advisory committee, like lots of places do, or do we use the planning processes that we have in place? And we were very clear from a board standpoint. We've got a great Planning Commission, we have MACs, they're active, and we really believe that they give us the best chance of having the broadest range of input in a manner that empowers the Planning Commission, empowers the MACs, which is, you know, you sit around, you've been on your MAC for, you know, 10 years, or you've been on the planning, and here we are doing the biggest planning thing around, and we create another committee. That's, you know, that just didn't feel right at all. So I just want the Planning Commission to know, and the MACs, you know, to say it publicly, we welcome the fact that we have good people there, and we really want to trust them to be people that are going to try to synthesize what they're hearing in their communities and passing that on to us. And I welcome input, you know, individually, I welcome input, you know, from the Planning Commission, and we don't, you know, always have to meet. I just think it'd be, for me, it'd be just as efficient for you to handle, for you to have a discussion at your Planning Commission hearing and for us to watch it, you know? We just watch your Planning Commission hearing, you know, in terms of being able to. So that's the first thing I want to say. Second thing that I want to say is I'm intrigued by the Hayward example. I think it is important that we put a deadline down, and it talked about best practices, come up with a timeline, do it. You can, I mean, after sitting on things like Fox Canyon, I can tell you, you can kick the can down the road on anything for as long as you want, you know? And, you know, there will be some hard decisions that'll have to be made here, and we should just set a timeline and then do the work, devote the resources, and get this thing done. So I'm sitting there trying to figure out what the timeline is. Bruce Smith's saying they did it in a year. Pretty interesting, right? But this is not realistic out there. But we do, we are a county that has one-time money come available almost regularly each year, and that one-time money, this is a one-time project, and I think that we are a county that fortunately, because of things we've done, this is one of the most important things we'll do for the next 25 or 30 years. We should devote the resources, get the thing done, and get it done in an efficient period of time, you know, as we go forward. So I don't know what Supervisor Parks was referring to when she says "before she leaves," because I don't know when she's talking about leaving. If she's talking about leaving in two years, or three years, you know, I mean, if that's 2018, that's really moving, right? In terms of trying to get that done. But I would welcome that, and, you know, if that's the case. If you're saying five years for a comprehensive plan, five years from July of 2015 is July of 2020, right? So if that, I think you're saying that's too long. You mean in this, you mean within this term, right? Now, whether it can be done, so I'd like to hear from the professionals about this, but certainly a timeframe that is robust in terms of the work effort and getting things done. One of the questions that I have is, do we, how much of those things on the list can we do concurrently? Because for me, for the benefit of the Planning Commissioners, we have about 15 items that we've given to the Planning Department over the last 10 years, and they say, when we get the time and the resources, we will do that. I find it fairly illogical if we do a general plan update and we still have those 15 items out there undone, because basically, those are things we said needed to be improvements. That's a devotion of some other resources that may be done again concurrently, you know, separate from this, and may, you know, dramatically increase the, you know, sort of the staff that we have to have and the management, et cetera. So I'm not ready to identify which of those things, and I realize that probably not all 15, but I'd like to consider those. I'd like to consider the optional items that are out there. So that being said, how do we move fast and be comprehensive, you know, as we go forward? And part of it is, I think that the idea of modifying some of these things and creating a hybrid in some places, where I just don't think we need to bog down, makes sense. I sat there with, you know, multiple times with different organizations doing a visioning statement for months and months and years and years, and you ended up where you started, you know? But you fought a lot about, you know, a few words and all of that other stuff. I just want us to try to avoid that, number one. So I will go through, now, with that background, I'll go through some of the answers to these questions here, right? Have we captured the issues as you understand them, I think, to the best that we could in this period of time? Should we prepare a comprehensive or a technical update? I think it's some hybrid in between those two that allows us to use our resources efficiently. I don't want us to be hasty and feel like we didn't, but I also don't want us to bog down and waste time. So I want staff to be, just like in Hayward, I like that idea that staff felt empowered to say, you got to get this done. Tell us what has to happen to get this process moving and to meet those milestones. What optional elements, if any, should be included? I think you've given us a decent list of things for us to include. On the economic one, I just want to be upfront on that one. I appreciate your comments when you said, if you're trying to preserve your ag land and open space, you're going to run into tension when you're also trying to do your economic, you know? You know, what do you do for economic development? Because if you're committing to saying you don't want to convert that land over, how do you do that? I don't want us to get caught in that kind of trap or do an academic exercise, like sometimes you did with alternatives, go through an academic exercise on economics. One possibility I'd like us to consider is maybe we do ag economics. In other words, in the agriculture element, can we talk about the profitability of agriculture, right? But I don't think that you're going to find a lot of people saying, we ought to be trying to figure out how much of the ag land we're going to convert to industrial uses, you know? It's just, that doesn't feel like where we're going to go with Ventura County. I don't know. I don't know how much we want to do. So that one I don't have solved yet, but in terms of the optional things, yes, water. And by the way, a place where we can get bogged down is water. And I, my input at the early process is, we have to trust that there are a bunch of other agencies, as Mr. Bagley pointed out, that have specific authority on water, and what we should have is a document that is a vision and is a guiding principle, but we can't get too embedded in it, but we should have something that's consistent, that really expresses our vision, that we want to be sustainable and watershed-wise as much as possible. That's my sense in terms of where we should go with water. What level of alternative should be done? Only when it's meaningful and not academic. So I don't want us to spend, I don't want us to make changes that are going to cause a high level of alternative analysis when they aren't changes that get us much benefit for that, or that are going to cause a significant amount of time with that. But if it's meaningful, certainly I want to have it. But to the extent that, as the gentleman talked about, in some places, if you don't really make significant change, and yet you sit there and try to, you know, it's such a narrow field that you have, I don't want to go through academic alternatives, and just recognize that. Should the area plans be updated? I think as much as we possibly can, and still make it in this timeframe, the area plans should be updated. What's the preferred public engagement outreach effort? This is what I want to, and I'm sorry to take so much time, but this is an important thing. This is what I really hope we can do better, and that is, I don't by any means want to minimize or decrease public input, but I don't want to rely on just one form of public input that seems to hear from the same voices, or the loudest voices, or the most determined voices. And if we only rely on meetings, you're going to get basically the loudest voices and the most determined voices, because those are the people that are going to show up at the meeting, and you can make a fair statement. Well, you didn't come to the meeting, you don't have any input. That's not what's going to give us the input that I think is most valuable, which is the broad input, an input that recognizes the core values. So yes, I do want to have some community meetings. Do I want to have 60 community meetings? I'm not so sure that 60 is better than 15 or 20, and then, as Mr. Cannon talked about, you know, let's get input online, let's get it all recorded, let's get it documented. Let's make sure... Let's make sure that anything major, we give people an opportunity, tell us what we should know about this so that we don't get to the end and somebody says, you know, you didn't, what about this? And we say, well, at least if we know that was recorded, we all heard it, it was recognized, we publicly recognized that we heard that. So, I'm looking for some combination of surveys, of finding out from the public, of, of this, this kind of online documentation. I know that in the city of Ventura, they did a number of things that gave them, oh, I liked the, the statement by the water person saying, I want it to be data driven. So, the data is, is scientific data, but it is also input data. If you can say, hey, 70% of the people on a professional survey that, you know, you know, professional poll that we did says, say this, and this represents a broad sample of the citizens of Ventura County, that's, that's meaningful. And, and regardless of what we might be hearing from a small segment of people that show up at a, at a hearing, we say, hey, you've got 70% of the people saying this, that's, that's something that we should look at. So, that's important to me for you to try to, to do that and to the extent that the consultants say our background is just in doing meetings and it's not in doing these other things, I'd like to hear, how do we complement that? No criticism, just, just trying to, to, to suggest that. Cost estimates, sure, I have questions about cost estimates, but we have one time resources and, and I want staff to do the best they can to try to make this efficient, but that's not the biggest question in, in my mind right now. Role of staff versus consultants. I, I want to, through our CEO, empower our staff to say, we've got a schedule, we want to stay on it, we want this to be the most important thing that our Planning Department is focused on and empower them to try to keep thinking and, and bring the proactive steps to us that we need to be able to do this well and, and try to stay on schedule. Should a wildlife corridor overlay zone be developed as part of this update? So far, from what I've seen from public input, it was the number one thing. Now, that was just one data point, but it was the number one thing on the list there, right, in terms of that. So, at, right now, yes, I want to continue to, you know, continue to see that. So, is it, I, I really want to hear and the final thing that I would say is, this is going to come back to us August 11th. August 11th is our last board meeting before we go dark. If we have questions or concerns or things that have to be tweaked, we now have to wait until September before we can go. If what we're trying to do is move fast, fast enough for Supervisor Park's schedule as, as really fast, we can't afford to lose those four weeks. So, what I would like to request, and I'll make this in the motion when we finally get to that, is that we have a preliminary report August 4th, still scheduled to have this also August 11th. So, we can ask any questions or get any tweaks so that when you get to August 11th, we're really there. And it, and it might just be staff saying, this is what we've been able to do up till August 4th and this is what we still have to do to be able to come to you August 11th. And it might be that you don't have an advance, you know, you don't have an advance, you don't have something that goes out on Wednesday before the August 4th, you just come August 4th. But, it gives us an opportunity to talk, gives us an opportunity to say, we spent more time now, these are the options we want to consider, but we're going to have to visit this a few times to package this properly so you get a, get a proper launch. So, I'll be including some of that in the motions, I don't want to cut anybody off, but I'd love to hear if Planning Commissioners have any thoughts about that now after hearing from us.
Madam Chair. I totally concur with the Supervisor said, the issue, I can, I think I can speak for the others. We're the ones that deal with those technical inconsistencies and that creates problems not only for staff, but ourselves in making decisions to recommend back to you. So, these elements, I think the Commissioners would like to discuss, we have two more meetings set before the 4th of August, if we can have staff include maybe a little workshop. I know with Saticoy is pretty bundled up in the 16th, I don't know about the 30th, to come back and give you recommendations at that point, to at least give you some guidelines what we feel are, are appropriate as far as what we see. I mean, I've already got some opinions about combining some of the elements like you talked about, the hybrid. Agriculture is the biggest water user, I mean, it's going to be there. It's also one of our biggest economic drivers, it's going to be there. It's also an issue as far as housing, it's going to be there. So, I, I agree with the Supervisor on the hybrid concept. So, I don't know if the other Commissioners have anything, Madam Chair.
The only thing I would add is, I would echo, I think, Mr. Cannon's comments. The county has a tremendous tool here in the technology it uses and makes available to the public. I think we could really maximize any input we would get from the public, taking advantage of that opportunity we have.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, no, Supervisor Bennett had a lot of, a lot of things he talked about there and I think where there's some good stuff. But, to me, the key is going to be a timeframe because this drags on and I think we should make commitment. But, the key to that commitment is funding. We can look at Kim and Steve and the staff down there and say, we can already use a whole bunch more funding and Mr. Powers gave them more funding to help out, but we've got all these other projects out there, people are struggling to get stuff through, you guys are, you know, working as hard as you can to do it. So, I don't know, we haven't made that commitment here where that funding is going to come from. And you look at, have to look at Mr. Powers and, you know, Mr. Carroll out there and say, okay, guys, we're talking three, couple million, are we going to put a million dollars a year up to do this? Because they're going to be busy on their own regular stuff. We've got to get that commitment, otherwise this is going to blow them up and the rest of the work that needs to be done is going to be a real problem for us. So, I think that has to be a, a deal and, and again, that's important. And I think also what you were saying here, Mike, is this economic piece, and going back to what you said, Steve, there, it's difficult under our sort of thing, we're not going to take, I don't think we're going to take land out and put warehouse there. But, we may look at this economic piece to bring together, do we need a new packing plant out in the ag, for the, for the ag? Are we going to do that? It's, it's an ag-related piece of business, you know, that doesn't take a lot of land, it's not a big huge parking, those kind of things, something you might see at like Lehman Air. One of those things that adds the economics, it makes it easier to do farming and if we're going to have that, want to have that land farmed and, and productive. So, I think that we should do that. And then also, are we going to put, allow that housing to go in on ag land if there's going to be some of that house we talked about before that? So, I think that kind of thing could be put together in this general plan that we're going to do those kind of things to booster our, our business, the ag business that we do as part of our economic issues that we have. But, so to me, I'd look, like to look at a comprehensive, I want to do this once and really look at most of what we can. But, at the end of the day, timeframe, don't drag it on and we're going to fund the money, we're going to come up with the money. Like you said, it's probably one time.
During your term.
Huh? During my term, our term, right? We can get it done. We've got three and a half years to get it done. These guys have talked about people doing early. So, maybe we'll set a record for a county.
Let's have Bruce and do it in a year.
Yeah. That's right.
For half the price.
Half that, for half the price, yeah. But, anyway, at the end of the day, we know it's going to cost money, we just have to be focused on that and, you know, and planning's got to figure out where they're going to get the people to do it. They've got to start, if we're going to make that commit, we're going to hire, we're going to do what we're going to do there. So, anyway.
Madam Chair, I just want to echo what the Supervisor mentioned, that we have an excellent Planning Commission, you know, and they can take their time and work on the elements, you know, and work on it and fine tune it and continue working on it. And, and I think it's important that, that we do that and it's supposed to set in up another commission and, and again, give the FTEs to the, to the Planning Commission to finish it in, in three and a half years, right, Supervisor Parks?
I also want to point out, while the area plans are old when they started, they, a lot of them have been amended, so that's, may not all of them need to be changed.
Quick aside if I could, and that is, I, I, I think using the Saticoy as the example of the area plan is not, is not what I would be looking for. I mean, I just think realistically, we can't do a half a million dollars for each area plan update and I don't think, I mean, some of these are, you know, small areas that don't need, you know, that, you're, again, you're not starting from scratch like you were in Saticoy. We're not going to have 25 meetings in the North Ventura Avenue area just for the area plan update, I wouldn't think, right? So, you do have input, you know, but we have to find some other more efficient ways to do that. As he said, the most expensive thing is having those outreach meetings and stuff, so we have to keep those down.
Mr. Moneybags? Talking to you.
Tarn it. Yeah, that's right. What happened to it? That's right, skinny moneybags, I think now. No, to your, your question about funding and so forth, so, based on, it depends on the number, if we're looking at roughly $4 million, I do believe through your board's management, we have a one-time fund set aside that we could afford that.
Right, right. Thank you. And we did just, we did touch on that a little bit during our budget discussions, knowing that this was coming to us. First, I'd like to thank all of you for being here, the public members who spoke, the Planning Commission, thank you for being here to, to hear all of the good work that's been undertaken by our planning staff and the consultants. And I think that you did capture the issues, I appreciate the numerous focus, one-on-ones and groups that you met with to really start to draw the key components of this together and the structure for us today. I, I think that I, I, I think we, there's no question, if we're going to do this, let's do it and let's do it thoroughly, let's make it stand the test of time and it should have a long horizon, whether it's 2050, 2040, certainly something beyond 2020. Exactly, that's when it's expired. So, and comprehensively to do so. And I, I, I think that, I think a hybrid of, of both the, the, what the model may be, but also how, how we're going to reach agreement on what components and elements of it. I, I personally think that water runs through all of this. You know, the, the agricultural industry is an economic engine, is a business in this county, water runs through, obviously whether they succeed, continue to succeed in this county. And I think that it is an important component to, to be included and as a, an element, more than an element, but something called out specifically is important in the general plan. I, I think we're, we're fortunate that we do have the great work of the watershed committees, the coalition over these last few years and successfully has demonstrated by the grants and dollars we've received to bring into this county to move needed projects forward. So, I, I, and we have that and we have the Economic Development Collaborative, which just completed a SEDS work and is undertaking now consultant work that's going to focus on what the ag, what would it take to continue to keep ag a strong industry and, and looking at the processing side, the support systems for agriculture, that that's important to, to look at that work that has already been commissioned and underway. I noted, I raised the issue of the sea level rise, although it's a LCP coastal county issue it still has, will have some important information for us. So, I think we have, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we have a lot of studies and things to draw on to advance the general plan. I think the, the ag industry, the tourism, the filming, the other pieces of what goes on in the unincorporated area are worthy of keeping in, in the discussion and, and the work that comes out of it. So, and of course, I brought forward the health and all policies, that runs through everything that we've talked about here. Healthy communities are, have transit oriented mobility components. Healthy communities have balance of, of both ag and urban and a good interface and healthy communities have a, a good mix of housing and opportunities for recreation and outdoor, outdoor activities. When it comes to outreach, I, I, I think we need to certainly do what, what is done in the way of meetings because we have a, a Planning Commission that, that we, our public members, seasoned and informed, public members, right? Willing to do some work with us. We have MACs in most of the communities and, and I think we need to go to perhaps some of our non-traditional outreach. That being, and I don't know, for example, I wouldn't say VACIDA is non-traditional, but when you talk about the business community having some input on this, let's ask VACIDA to sponsor an evening session. Let's look at, you know, something that we can do with our chambers that, that are in those off-work hours where there can really be true input. And think about others in the nonprofit world that, that have intersections in the general plan and see where you have groups to reach out to. I like the idea of surveys. I, I think that crafted well, that gives people an opportunity to, you know, to, to have their voice heard or, right? And, and, and that's an art in itself, I understand that. Timing, let me see, 17 months from now? I'll be, but I, I don't, I don't think we want to drag this out for years, I certainly don't, certainly, and end up in a case where it was Monterey where you've got, that's, that's horrifying. So, that you don't want to do. So, I, I, I think between a mix of, of additional resources dedicated just to this work for the planning excellent team to administer and manage and oversee in the way of, of FTEs, but also fully engage talented, skilled consultants and experts who can help us move this forward, I think it'll take both in order to really keep a timeline and a, and a budget and a focus that's as strong as it can be. And we knew it was going to cost money going in and, and the point made that we, the plate's already full in planning, so we can't expect all of that to be set aside to do this, that's not fair to those who are in the mix for projects or whatever. And, and so we should not do that. So, we know it's going to take additional resources and we have had some discussion on that and need to continue doing so. So, as far as other elements, I think we can have some more discussion as that, as it comes back to us for further input. But, health and all policies, a focus on ag, ag that has a, a strong focus on water, mobility, outreach, I'll end there. Okay, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could I try my hand at a motion?
Sure.
All right, just, just, just to get us, just to get us started here in terms of that, and that is that, that we accept staff's recommendations in terms of funding and things that, that staff has talked about, but basically, so we, we accept staff's recommendations, but using this as our guide here, that we look at some hybrid between a technical and comprehensive plan that captures to the best of staff's ability what they believe they're hearing from us in, in terms of, I'm not hearing any objection, I think, I think we're talking about some kind of hybrid there. The, in terms of what optional elements should be included, if staff would, it's already, you've already identified tentative costs, if staff would prepare for us the options to be able to choose what options we want to have. And if staff would also, I know they've done it once, but review our list of the other items that we have there so we can have another conversation about which of those items we want to try to do here, what kind of resources would it take? In terms of level of alternative analysis that should be done, I'm not going to try to put that into this motion, I think we made, we made some comments. But, but yes, this work plan should include updating the area plans that are out there in a cost-efficient manner. And what is the preferred public engagement outreach effort? This is specific both to the area plans and to the other. And that is that we use a hybrid more, I mean, something that's going to give us more broad input than just community meetings where only the people that care enough to, or have the ability to show up can, can do that. So, it's a hybrid and it's a hybrid where we work through our Planning Commission and our MACs to really use their meetings and their, their connections to try to have this outreach. And we also, where, we also work through the Supervisors for those particular districts. I mean, I can't imagine if you're, if you're going to be doing outreach in, like Sherwood, you're, you're going to work with Supervisor Parks to sort of design that. So, you work with the Supervisors in each of those districts because we may be able to significantly reduce what, you know, say, hey, this is the most efficient way to get everybody to feel like they had good input. I feel like I could do that in the Ojai Valley, for example, or in Lake Sherwood. The Supervisors are going to be able to help with that. And, and that staff approach this from the standpoint of strong direction for staff to really take charge of this process, to make it a priority and to deliver it at the deadline, but to give us staff's honest feedback soon in terms of what are realistic deadlines to, to do this in, in terms of trying to, to lay this out. And that would be my motion, right? I think that includes, but you know what's nice about technology is you can go back and listen to it over and over again and.
I think you should ask, you should ask them though, was that, I mean, was there some things that you understood what he was asking you to do? I mean, seriously.
Yeah, and that's a fair question.
Because I mean, you said a lot.
Yeah, exactly.
And what you were saying, did they understand what you were trying to ask?
But, there's still a couple more bullet points too.
Hang on, this is she, she. Hang on, let's see if she understands.
Can you work with what I've said? That's what I'm trying to.
I can work with what you said. I've heard what you've said, and, you know, we were, you know, talking with the consultants. What I would want to do, you know, I want to understand the date you want us to come back, and I want to make sure that they're available, and that Chris is available to come back on that date, if you wanted us to come back on the 4th, I heard.
This is what I would suggest. If you have the consultants planning on being here on the 11th, still have them come on the 11th. Just schedule this as an agenda item for the 4th, if it's just for us to talk some more, right?
Yeah, I think.
You may, you may say you don't have anything ready. I just don't want to only have a talk on the 11th before we go dark for four weeks.
Or with feedback from staff.
So, it's just, just you, just, it's just, you say, talk to us some more, or this is what we know by August 4th. You know what I mean? And so that we can sort of help, you know, we can have another opportunity.
But you don't want all the answers just come back from our discussion.
Whatever you got.
Well, I will be in Peru on August 4th, but I'm sure Chris will be here.
Chris will be here.
To cover. But yes, I understood everything that you said. I think what we really want to spend some time is in fleshing out that shorter deadline. I heard what you say, I like to do things in a shorter period of time. We have big projects coming up, and we've just finished a few big ones, so we do want to take a look at that staffing issue. And we, we did come here a couple of months ago, when we talked about the general plan annual report, and said, once we understand the scope and the scale of this project, we'll more fully understand how many people that we need to hire to not only move this project through, whatever size it's going to be, but also take a look at the projects that can be incorporated into this, like a wildlife corridor. There's a few other things that can be that are on Supervisor Parks's list, the rezoning issues that we need to address. So, and then there's the other things that we need to do that are ordinance-related and not general plan-related, and we need the people there to work on those items as well. So, I'm not sure we'll have a comprehensive picture of that on the 4th, because I'm still not sure exactly the comprehensive picture of this. But we do plan on coming back, I believe we said, early next year, to really walk through every single project that we have, and maybe set priorities on the things that are not going to be included in a general plan update, simply because they're not related to a general plan update.
I guess I wouldn't want to wait till early next year, because if they are things we want to put into the general plan, I'd want to at least, you know, have a conversation sooner than early next year.
September, October.
And I would like to just point out that a lot of the area plans, as I said, have been amended, 2011, 2010. I'm just wondering, do we, if we can put that off and get the general plan update done, and we can still go back, because once you have your general plan update done, then you can make your area plans consistent with that. It may be a way to expedite and then, and be able to take things at smaller bites. That's the suggestion. And then we are also talking about the Horizon Year, that might be something we have an agreement on, too.
The Horizon Year will be pretty important, whether it's going to be 2040 or 2050, and a lot of that will depend on, you know, the transportation modeling, that we're still not sure of what's going to happen yet. We have to have something to base that on.
I guess in response to Supervisor Parks's request, I'd be uncomfortable pulling the area plans out at this point in time. We may pull some out, you may say, hey, we just don't need to work on Sherwood or whatever. But, you know, and if that's the case, fine. But I think where we can, we ought, there's just some real synergy. If I'm going to be getting people together, you know, to talk about the general plan update, they're going to want to talk about their, how the general plan affects them and their community more than anything else. And so, it just feels like there's great synergy there to do that.
I would agree. But the number 10 is kind of scary, but it really isn't 10, because we don't have Almondson, and we'll address that in the general plan update. We're working on the LCP, but, you know, we'll need separate funding to work on that to the extent we need. Also, Piru is relatively new, and Saticoy will be before you in a couple of months. So, you know, we do have a few that we need to address, the North Ventura area plan. And so there'll be some, El Rio, that we probably should look at. So, we'll maybe take some more time and highlight the issues, and maybe put some prioritization on those.
And we'll need that information for our MAC, too.
And did you, were you also saying that it's helpful to have the Horizon Year determined?
I think it's helpful to have the board's input on what they're thinking. You know, 2040 is a good time. 2050, I would have to see if we have enough information, you know, enough information, or what exactly that we would need to set a 2050 horizon. So, that's something that we can come back with as well.
Yeah, would you present the alternatives?
Information to get to 2050, and if you don't have that, that could hold us up until that information comes, so we may not get that done.
Yeah, we're going to have to be doing some immediately coordination with BCTC on their traffic modeling. You know, there's some baseline information that we're going to have to understand to extrapolate that out to, you know, 2040 and beyond.
All right. Is BCTC prepared to do this, because knowing general plan is coming, or not?
Yeah, we've been in coordination with them, yes.
So, you're working with Darren Kettle, isn't it?
Yes, yes, we are. So, I think I understood, unless, you know, Chris has some questions or the consultant, I think I understood the direction that you're going, that we'll be back on the 4th, and then we'll be back again on the 11th with, you know, the answers to your questions.
Good. I guess my big key of this is, this is going to move forward, everybody wants to move forward. It's how you're going to handle the rest of the work you do.
It's how we're going to handle the rest of the workload, and I know Rosemary's probably over there very nervous right now. But we are finishing the Saticoy area plan, right? So, that will relieve us some. We did just finish the wireless ordinance, right? And we are working mightily to get here 2016 with the LCP. So, everything we do finish, right, we have that staff resources to look at the other things that are on our task list. But what happens is, we have the unexpected things, and people can come in and apply at any time for a general plan amendment. So, we had the motocross guy, you know, just recently in here. And that's something that comes in, whether we know it or not, and then we have to address things like, you know, the coastal trails and things that come to us. So, our staff isn't just working also on everything that the board has, there's a whole nother.
Well, that's, I mean, you have your normal work you do, and I'm just wondering how you're going to, just trying to figure what you've got to do, because that's part of my thing about this funding, is how we staff you, because this is a three-to-five-year project. Well, we're going to have to probably have people that are hired just to do this kind of work.
Oh, we would definitely have to hire.
And one of the things that you mentioned having was also a dedicated project manager just for this project, too. And I think that will really help focus it.
Right. And then if we have a more compressed deadline, we'd probably have to lean more on the, on immediate knowledge of consultants that we would, you know, bring in. And then, you know, train our staff kind of behind them to have a more compressed timeline. But I still think that's doable. And so, that's what we'll take a very serious look at before we're back here before you.
So, you'll let us know by August 4th, then?
August 4th or August 11th, for sure.
I know there was one other question that you asked, wasn't in this list, but it was in your, in the PowerPoints, that I do think it makes sense at the beginning to at least offer my thoughts, and if the board is supportive, I would include that in motion. That was, do we take, do we take individual property owners' requests for changes in zoning and all that stuff as part of this? And my view is, they should, if they want to make changes, they should go through the normal process in terms of making changes. The general plan shouldn't be the processing of people's individuals, I see the consultant shaking his head, the processing of individual plans. Then, if they go through the process, and we're still doing our general plan, we can always, you know, make the appropriate adjustments. So, I would include that in the motion, at least for initial direction. By the way, all of this stuff we can revisit as we go forward, but you need something to sort of bracket the workload that you're asking, that you're putting out there for requests for proposals.
Exactly.
I'll say just one thing on that. Property owner requests and a three-year time schedule are mutually inconsistent.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, they would be. They wouldn't want to be held up, because we would say, well, we can't process it, because we're doing the general plan update. Same thing.
Take yours.
One other thing, I guess I would like just a little bit of clarity on, is are we saying, as a whole here, that our visioning is the guidelines for orderly development? So, that's a document that we're not going to look at, or we're not going to spend any time with? We would kind of create a visioning around that document, that urban development is in the cities and the county?
I think the vision's really clear.
Okay.
If you have, there's a couple word change, wordsmithing, but I think the vision is really clear. I don't know about the rest of the board.
My response is yes for efficiency purposes. And two, I think I heard the consultant say, what you do in those situations is you verify. And I think, well, there's already been a lot of verification out there. So, I just, I just don't think we should get bogged down in a, you know, when the idea of the guidelines for orderly development, when I go to these meetings, there's nobody that speaks against it anymore, right? It used to be, but not any longer, right?
So, you'll make the motion.
Yeah. So, I'll include all that, include those two adjustments in the motion, which is no individual things, and that direction for you to use that as the, as a starting process.
And verify.
Yeah.
Have some, have some opportunity for us to discuss.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Can't say I've looked at every word, but.
I'll second.
Was there a second?
I'll second the motion.
There is a second. There's a motion and a second.
I don't have a.
All in favor verbally say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the opposition, move forward with that? All right, great. That's some action now. Chair of the planning commission, you have an action, sir.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll undertake a motion to receive and file the today's information, and request staff at their earliest convenience to put on the agenda for comments by the commissioners. Back to the question. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Since there is no discussion, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You are welcome.
Planning commission is adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.
And Chair of the